Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. And this regular meeting in Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers here at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding. Also present are Council President Deb Rule and Counselors Joe Espiero, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted code of ethics and civility as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as our sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Captain Rick Bailey back there. Hi, Captain Bailey, welcome. If everyone please stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we're going to try something a little new, just to try to improve the process. You might have noticed things have changed on the agenda regarding public comment. Specifically, this was something that was mentioned to me and I experienced it as a citizen where you come to a meeting, you want to speak to a item that's number seven, eight, nine, 10. You wait here for three or four hours and you get up and say your three minutes to that item. And sometimes that can be a little frustrating. So I've made some changes so the public doesn't have to wait until the end of the meeting to address their issue of concern. So during public comment time, following these announcements and reports, I'll call for both general public announcements in the forum as well as comments on individual agenda items. If you wish to speak on a particular agenda item, instead of waiting for that item to come up on the agenda, you speak during this public, single public comment time at the beginning of the meeting. Again, this will include items on the consent calendar and comments of general nature regarding relevant city of Sandpoint topics not on the agenda. There is one big exception to this, and that's public hearings for land use files and other public hearings. Those comments have to occur during the public hearing. So if you're here to talk about the the public hearing on the agenda tonight, you have to wait for that item. But in general, I hope this will be helpful for those members of the public who've experienced that waiting and sitting around all day and night waiting to say three minutes worth of comments on an item. And I hope the council appreciates that. We'll we'll try it out and see how it goes. And yeah, that's that's a little change. Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
May I make a comment on sort of on this that we talked about last week?
Yes, I know exactly what you're going to say, and I'll follow up on that as well when we get those public comments. So I know I can read your mind. If you wish to speak during a public comment time or during the public meeting, please complete the signup sheet and hand it to the staff at the back of the room. And if you do make public comments, I believe this is what Councilwoman Duquette's going to speak of. If you're not aware, we can only speak and engage in business that's on the agenda. So if someone from the public speaks during the forum, they want to talk about a bike accident down on Cedar Street, we can't really discuss that issue because it's not on the agenda. So there have been council members and the public who are frustrated. Sometimes you get up and say your three minutes and we look like blank stares at you because they're comments, not debate. The council, some council members, Councilwoman Duquette especially, wants you to know that we hear you and we're not just catatonic. We just don't have the ability to enter into discussion and debate about things not on the agenda. So council members can follow up. You can reach out to them individually about a topic you bring up during the forum. And we can, the council has a process where they can bring those items forward at a future meeting for discussion. So we do hear you and appreciate your comments and involvement. Is that what you were thinking of?
It is, but can I say one thing more?
Fire away.
So if somebody says something that is of interest to the council, after the public comment is over, can we say, do you think that's something that we should?
That would be deliberation and discussion. And it's not listed on the agenda.
Not even with each other.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Oh, fine.
And that was our legal opinion providing that confirmation.
Know how frustrating that is.
You may ask, you may ask that person if it's okay for you to contact them for a follow-up conversation.
Right then? Yes.
Right then.
Right? Okay, thank you. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Mayor's announcements and reports, and then followed by council announcements and reports. I had the privilege of meeting with the governor, the congressional delegation, and representatives from Bonneville Power last week down in Priest River. We were discussing the spill gates, the Albion Falls. The summary and takeaway is the Army Corps has not provided a detailed directive and plan for how they're going to address the spill spillways. And of course, if you're not familiar, we have one that is jeopardized and they don't have replacements. And they're fearful that the rest of them are jeopardized as well, their integrity. The long and short of those discussions were that the Army Corps has a very slow deliberate process of replacing one, you know, studying it, studying the next one, potentially replacing that one. Representative Mark Suter thought that he contacted some folks and thought that with the blueprints, the private sector could simply replicate the existing spill gates very quickly. So the congressional delegation, the governor's office are working to explore those options that those spillway gates can be replaced much more quickly and we can have a very secure management of our lake levels. So that was the big one. Two more things that I just wanted to bring up. There's a lot of roadwork out there. This is the season we try to do it after kids are back in school. You'll know that Fir is under construction right now. Boyer is either under or about to be under construction north of Super One. Chestnuts being worked on. Both of those are waterline projects. And Fifth and Pine is in the process of being worked on right now, too. So just ask the public to bear with us. Plan accordingly, give a little extra time and try your best not to be frustrated by the delays. Finally, we do expect to hear on the Great Northern Grant in the month of September, the first of our two grant submissions for that $29 million project. So with that, are there any council announcements? Councilwoman.
First of all, a huge thank you to everybody in our community and our visiting tourist friends. We just completed 20 years of Trinity on Labor Day. It was an amazing summer. It was amazing to get back there. It was amazing to hear everybody's stories of how a little mom and pop cafe, 60-seat cafe on First Street, turned into an on-the-water restaurant that served almost 1,000 meals a day at its peak. Got to hear so many stories how people met there, engagements there, wedding anniversary celebrations. It was a wonderful three months, and I just want to thank everybody for being a part of that. It was really awesome. It was a great send-off for all of our staff and for myself as well. And we're really looking forward to getting 113 open and hopefully being back there in the new iteration of the hotel when that does happen. So thank you all very much for that. Second announcement, kind of our last hurrah at Trinity is going to be the Bonner General Health Foundation Find Your Strength 5K and 1K. This will be the third year as well, with proceeds going to the grant program, which is huge for the hospital. It typically funds a lot of stuff that those departments don't get budgeted as for as well. It brings a lot of camaraderie between each of the department heads and their employees. If for more information or for signups, please go to bonnergeneral.org. Again, that's September 14th. We'll have a party afterward on the East Lawn of Trinity. Taco bar, non-alcoholic refreshments, and some alcoholic beverages for the adults, face painting, magic, and all sorts of games. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Any other council announcements? Councilwoman Duquette, I believe you have one?
I do have one. After talking to the mayor, I will still share it. I have to recognize for everybody first that this is not a city sanctioned project and the city is not obligated for this. But our community of Sandpoint, I was introduced to some folks from a model forest policy program who asked if I was interested in working with their group towards a community grant to participate in the newly launched Climate Smart Communities Initiative. I shared this opportunity earlier with Mayor Grimm in the early stage. The Forest Policy Program, MFPP, is a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that builds the capacity of communities to be climate resilient by sustaining water resources, productive forests, citizens' well-being, and thriving economies. I just think it's pretty nice that Sandpoint's community was chosen with only 11 other nationwide communities to be a part of this. It's a grant was awarded to the MFPP through the Climate Resilience Fund and implemented in collaboration with NOAA. It's a chance to learn with MFPP how to develop a climate resilience plan. I think this goes along with our comprehensive plan, Chapter 8, Goal 5E, Chapter 11, Goal 4H. Also, as reinstatement of our sustainability committee, I think it goes hand in hand. It's a, they're going to volunteer. I am a volunteer on this. Like I said, it has nothing to do with the city staff necessarily. But their volunteer planning team members are invited to play a vital role as they participate in a series of monthly virtual training webinars and support the risk assessment and planning process with a monthly working session over the next 11 months. The project will be called Sandpoint Forward: Planning for Resilience. The core team, like I said, I'm a volunteer on it. There'll be other community members. It's also open to any government staff or officials to join the climate planning team if they wish or to be on the advisory committee. So I have two contact informations. One's myself and one is the woman in charge of the MFPP. I just wanted to share that with you all. And I have a copy for you guys to read for your information. And I have a local press release that was put out in August on this, just a little blurb with a picture of Sandpoint Lake because other communities had the same. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Duquette. Council members, anyone else have announcements?
It'd be exciting, I think.
Excellent. At this time, this is kind of a special event. I will yield the floor to Police Captain Bailey from the Sandpoint Police Department for awards and presentations. Thanks, Captain Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Very proud to say that we're here tonight to present a lifesaving award to Officer Zachary Fisher. Let me have Corporal Riley Flanagan come up. He will form me on all the details that happened on that ship. He was the ship supervisor.
Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you.
Good evening.
Appreciate it. I've been bestowed the honor to present this award. Officer Fisher, can you join me? Didn't know what to say. I'm not very, you know, I had a big sister who talked a lot, so I'm not very good with words, but the chief wrote me something, so I can't mess that up hardly. City of Sandpoint, somebody thinks they can. So City of Sandpoint would like to extend their appreciation and heartfelt thank you for your service and dedication to the police department and to your community. We are representing you with this lifesaving award for your actions on July 16th, 2024. Because of your efforts, an individual's life was saved and you may, you made a significant difference. Corporal Riley Flanagan recommended Officer Zach Fisher for lifesaving award for Going Above and Beyond on July 16th, 2024. EMS personnel explained Officer Fisher's actions were instrumental in saving a man's life. On July 16th, 2024, Sandpoint Police Department received a call about an adult male who had collapsed and was not breathing. Officer Fisher quickly responded to the distressing situation, located the male, and began performing lifesaving CPR. Later, Corporal Flanagan received a heartwarming news from EMS that the individual had regained consciousness and was recovering well. On behalf of the City of Sandpoint and our community, I want to extend our heartfelt appreciation for your service and dedication. Your unwavering commitment and high standards in performing your duties do not go unnoticed. Sincerely, the Chief of Police. I won't put it on you. We're going to invite Officer Fisher's family up for photograph.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Fisher, and everyone in the department for your service and protection of our community. I will now yield the floor to staff for some quick updates and reports. Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Directors, on her way up.
Good evening. So I'm going to report on special events that are upcoming. We have you exciting ones that are permitted and ready to go. We have the Sandpoint Summer Music Series. The next concert is next Thursday on September 12th at Farm and Park. The concerts begin at around 6 o'clock. The next one is the Ponderay Cup that starts on Thursday. Geez, this week, tomorrow, it starts tomorrow, and it ends on Monday. Time is flying. It's at War Memorial in Traverse Park. And then we have the Washington, Canada, Idaho Ride, which is the annual 395-mile, six-day ride that will take the riders along the International Selkirk Loop. And it begins at City Beach on Monday, September 9th. And it ends on Saturday, September 14th, back at City Beach with an after-party at Trinity. And there is 150 riders this year. And so, yeah, the last one is the Regatta. And that is going to be at Sand Creek, the Sand Creek Regatta, and that is Saturday, September 7. And that is about all to report on for Central Services. A lot going on, but just special events tonight. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Cheryl. And council members, Cheryl just kind of touches on the high points. And any given day, she is working on dozens of contracts, agreements, licenses, managing IT and HR and a bunch of other things in the clerk's office. So she's giving us just the highlights of the events because that could probably take an hour if you went through everything. But if you have any questions, please.
The department is great.
Any questions for Cheryl? Thanks, Cheryl. Jason Welker, Community Planning and Development Director. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Hope everybody's doing well. I've got a few updates for you. First, on the staffing front, we have extended an offer to a supervisor for the James Z. Russell Sports Center. We had over, we had about 25 applications for that position from all over the country. We ended up interviewing six. I'll tell you, I would have been thrilled to have the top three and satisfied with any of those six. We do expect to have an answer by Friday, a signed offer letter, and we're hopeful that this candidate who has 20 years of experience managing sports facilities for cities, organizing adult and youth recreation programs. We're hoping to have that person join us sometime in October to kind of oversee the the opening of the James Z. Russell Sports Center. I do want to give you kind of a preview of the timeline for the remainder of the Traverse Park Improvement Project. It's had so many moving parts this year from the completion of the Bicycle Skills Course to the grand opening of the Skate Park last month to now in the next 10 weeks or so, we're going to see an absolute, almost unrecognizable transformation of that park. So let me give you an idea of what's going on in the next two months at Traverse Park. Right now, the steel frame for the 4,000-square-foot canopy, that's the covered area in front of the building, is being erected. Actually, right now, they've poured all the footers last week. That steel frame is starting to go up. By mid-October, all of the donated lumber from Idaho Forest Group will have been installed on that. So you will actually not see what you currently see at the front of that building. You'll see a completely different wood facade. Utilities for the playground and splash pad are going to be completed by September 12th. That's in eight days. And the site clearing for the playground construction begins tomorrow. September 20th, equipment pads for playground will begin installation. That's where the equipment will actually sit. Those all require underground footers. September 23rd, the surface coating and striping of the courts inside the James Z. Russell Center will begin. That'll take about a week. We've got local contractors, Steve Geiger, the mayor of Ponderay, is actually doing that work. He's got a painting business, so he won the contract for that job. September 27th, the walkways and curbs for the playground will begin to be installed. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the the shape of the playground is actually of a butterfly wing. So when you look at it from above, it'll it'll be shaped just like a butterfly wing. That was a design element that Maeve and her team implemented. October 14th, thanks to this board, the parking lot will be repaved, complete resurfacing of the parking lot, fresh asphalt coat and striping for all the parking spaces. There will be about a week where the parking lot will be closed to the public for that job. At the same time as the parking lot will do the fire lane around the James Z. Russell Building and pave the pathway that is currently gravel around the tennis courts to east. So that that's really going to make the whole project look like it's approaching completion. October 23rd, playground equipment installation begins, followed by playground surfaces in the first week of November. So those are the various safety surfaces that will be installed immediately following the playground features. Finally, starting October 25th through November 21st, the landscaping will be implemented. This is kind of the final phase of the whole park. We are up to 88 trees that will be planted around the building, the south, the west, the north, and the playground. 88 trees are actually in our landscaping plan. So that's going to take about a month to complete the entire landscaping component. On the east side of the building, you may notice there's some underground storm, some stormwater transportation there. That's going to be put grass over that so that we kind of maintain an open flow between the outdoor tennis courts and the indoor tennis courts. Okay, that's, it's really going to start taking shape, like it's going to be unrecognizable in the next two months. Couple radio shows to clue you into. Last week, our very own Heather Upton joined Hannah Coombs for her monthly Community Character Hour. I really recommend this episode. It's a, it's a full history of City Beach Park, actually since before it was a park. So you can hear the geological history all the way up through the construction of the Snack Shack during the Great Depression. That was a WPA program all the way up to modern day. And on that note, I am excited to share with you that one of our parks kind of maintenance projects that we are starting right now after Labor Day is kind of a rejuvenation of the Snack Shack. Our Parks Team already began replacing the trim on the Snack Shack. Heather has has chosen historically relevant colors to repaint the Snack Shack, and we're really excited to just kind of give that a facelift. It's been decades since the Snack Shack has gotten any, any loving care. So Marcia Snack Shack, of course, named after Marcia Ogilvy, Ogilvy, former mayor. We plan to spruce up the signage there as well to really honor her legacy. Tomorrow morning, Katie Bradbury, our Recreation Superintendent, myself, will be on CARE-FY to share some of these updates about Traverse Park and focus largely on our vision for the activation of the James Z. Russell Center for Youth and Adult Programming. That's a sports facility. It's not just a tennis and pickleball club. So Katie is already very much focusing on how to use that for lots of different youth programs across all different types of sports, wellness, health activities. On that note, we also had a very, very successful recreation event last Friday night. A movie in the park, the first in several years that the Parks and Rec team has put on. In fact, Katie, this was fully her idea. She had no idea of the history of movies in the park from back when they used to be at Lakeview, but we did it right across the street at the Pine Street Ball Field. We had 300 attendees. We rented a 26-foot movie screen and a professional sound system, and we showed the movie Sandlot, which is a baseball film on a baseball diamond, hugely popular neighborhood event. It drew all the neighbors, came out with their kids, 300 attendees. And we're really excited to have, you know, somebody on our team to kind of envision those sorts of community events. She ran that whole thing by herself, by the way. She's the only rec person we have on staff at the city right now. Finally, committees and commissions. I am super excited to share with you that they will be convening over the next three weeks. Tomorrow, my committee, the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee, will meet for the first time. A week from tomorrow, the Parks and Rec Commission will meet for the first time. And a week after that, the Sustainability Committee will meet for the first time. So we've been doing internal training with the staff liaisons. Melissa, our clerk, and Heather have been helping train some of us staff liaisons on how to best work with those citizen advisory boards. So that's been a long effort in the making. Thanks to the mayor and for you all for supporting the vision to engage citizens at a level that we haven't seen in quite some time. So I look forward to reporting back to you in two weeks on how those first couple of committee meetings go.
Okay. And Jason, just one question. So those committees, if people are just hearing about them now, is there a rolling letter of interest that we'll keep on file, you know?
Yeah, there are. There's a form linked from the city homepage right now for interested citizens who want to be involved. And these initial round of appointments staggered one, two, and three-year terms. So for those three committees, we're, we've, we've appointed them at this point. So starting a year from now, those first, you know, tranche of appointees' terms will come up, and there will be opportunities to to engage. We're still looking for volunteers for the Urban Forestry Commission and the ADA Committee. So those are the two that are still accepting applications right now for the current reformation.
The second one was the ADA.
ADA, yeah. We've got about four on those. We need to get to five. So we're, you know, we still are looking for some citizens to get involved. And those actually have some requirements for participation, a little bit more stringent than the the ones that are forming now. That's probably why it's been harder to get applicants. We are looking for people with particular, you guys discussed this a couple of weeks ago. We're looking for people with particular experience and skills to be on those committees.
What about the youth component? I don't believe I appointed anyone from high school or junior high. Are those, can you give some thought to?
I love the idea. I also know from feedback from Melissa that these committees are most effective when they are meeting during, during, during the day. People are less willing to give up their evenings for these volunteer roles. So we're, the first round of meetings, we're scheduling for the lunch hour, basically. Staff will be giving up their lunch hours to come join citizen volunteers who are probably taking an hour off of of work or taking their lunch hour to come participate. But certainly, the idea of having youth or student participants is a great goal for for the future. So maybe in the next round of applicants, when we, we can do some active outreach to the schools.
Yeah, excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just made a comment. I would be concerned about staff, and I would prefer that they just shift their lunch hour and they still get it.
Good point. I'm sure they will not skip lunch altogether.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Jason, thank you for all your hard work. When do you anticipate that we'll be able to buy our memberships for the Russell Center?
We are transitioning to a new rec management software program right now. That's one that's more robust and can handle the type of memberships and and fee structures that we're implementing at the Russell Center. I'm hopeful that, you know, four weeks out from opening, we'll be able to start opening up memberships to the community. Yeah. But again, like, there's a lot of moving parts there. Where our current rec, rec one is what we currently use. It's kind of overwhelmed at present by the various things we're trying to use it for, from mortgage, City Beach, to RV park reservations to, you know, youth programs. So the one we're, we're looking to transition to will be more capable of handling the more diverse types of things we want to offer in the rec department. So don't have a date on that yet. I know I'm getting a lot of questions about that as well. I'm speaking to the Panhandle Pickleball Club in a few weeks to talk about memberships and all the opportunities. And the Sandpoint Tennis Association was in our office today asking questions. So the the community is excited. A lot of people are just waiting to be able to give us money to join for the year. We're incentivizing annual memberships by giving two months free. So I know a lot of people are going to want to sign up right away. And certainly, the the facility in the city will, will be able to use that revenue to start staffing it and, you know, open it up for all sorts of community uses.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
Did you want to?
I was just going to follow up on something. Go ahead.
Okay, um, questions. When was KRFY's Heather?
That aired last Monday. It's currently, you can see it on their, I think it's on their podcast page on their website.
I missed that one. And I have a question. You speak so quickly. I couldn't get all the dates for the schedule for the, could, do you have a piece of paper with them on that you could?
Yeah, I could, I could just share this with you. Yeah.
That would be great because I lost, I lost all of that.
Okay.
The tree that was requested, somebody asked about it. The tree that was requested, somebody asked about it, that was on the south west side that was saved and had excavation by it. And I I know that last time, it's it's a question. Was it watered, I guess?
Yeah, all those.
Said that irrigation had been off for a while and
Yeah, but our parks, our parks screw has been this manually watering during the construction. Yeah.
That'll make somebody happy. I did just to share, I went to the high school. I talked to the principal about getting youth to join the Sustainability Committee. She sent me to the woman in charge of their earth club. I also will, who was a KRFY DJ. He, I tried to talk to him twice in person about getting some of his friends. I could get no high school.
I have a middle school daughter who would love to participate.
Ah, well, good. I went to the wrong. My kid, my grandkids and their dad went to the movie and loved it.
Oh, good.
It was fun. So that's awesome.
Great.
Thanks for that.
Uh, Jay, go ahead.
Do you mind, it's gonna be a long night if we hold comments, we can email staff. If we have any questions, we'd be fine with that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Uh, Councilman Welker, just a couple of things. Impact fees are ongoing. That product is in progress.
Yep.
And development, I imagine it's cranking right now.
Yep, it's the busiest time of year. People see the colder temperatures and the rain, and they want to get those building permits in. So our team is full on processing building permits. We have some new subdivisions that are coming to P and Z in the next couple of months. Can't talk about those, of course, but you'll hear about them when they come to you.
So, yeah. Any other questions for council? I mean, uh, Council Director Welker.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Fire Chief Gavin Gilchrist. Fucking dapper. Share this real quick.
It takes me a couple of seconds. Technology challenged. There we go. First of all, I'd like to say on behalf of Sandpoint Fire, congratulations to Officer Fisher for, that was just outstanding work. I was out on that call. I didn't, I didn't realize which police officer was there first, but outstanding work by him. We have, I'll be putting your packets next, uh, next cycle for our open house on October 11th. Uh, that'll be a Friday from two to five. Uh, normally, we do those on a Saturday, but we're trying to change it up, trying to catch kids as they come out of school, you know, before they hit the weekend. Football season's back, so once Saturday starts, people like, they don't, they don't come out, right? So we have a on consent tonight, the CBA, and I just wanted to say a couple of words about that. I know you probably don't have any questions. It's been in your packets, but I want to express my deepest appreciation for the outstanding collaboration between the City of Sandpoint, the International Association of Firefighters Local 2319, and successfully negotiating and finalizing this new collective bargaining agreement. This, uh, this achievement is a testament to the dedication, the professionalism, as well as commitment of both parties to ensure that the needs of our firefighters are met while also considering the broader interest of our community. Uh, the process of collecting bargaining can often be challenging, requiring careful consideration, open communication, and a willingness to find common ground. Um, the ability of these these two teams to work together effectively to reach an agreement that benefits all involved is truly commendable. Uh, the new agreement not only strengthens the working conditions and benefits for our brave firefighters, but also reinforces the city's commitment uh, to public safety and the well-being of its employees. Uh, the collaboration exemplifies the kind of constructive partnership that is essential for fostering trust, mutual respect, and continued progress within our community. Uh, to those negotiating teams, thank you for your tireless efforts and for setting a positive example of what we can achieve through cooperative uh, cooperation and shared purpose. Uh, the city of Sandpoint and its firefighters are fortunate to have leaders dedicated to making a meaningful difference. And I look forward to the continued success of our community through these partnerships. Um, we just have one more, trying to do something new. We had one more. One more announcement. Uh, we're not trying to increase our crew members by any means, but uh, we did have a new addition to our team. And this is Maslow Yukic, Captain Yukic and his wife Cody. Maslow was born August 21st at eight oh three in the morning. That was kind of an, he was an early riser. Um, but we just, you know, mama, baby, and Zach, they're all doing fine. So just wanted to put that out there and say how proud we are of them. And that's it for fire.
Thanks, Chief. Um, any questions for the chief? Keep up the great work, Chief. Appreciate all you guys do.
Excellent. Guys, have a good night.
Uh, anyone else from departments want to give an update? If not, let's see anyone jumping up. Next, we'll proceed with the public comment portion of the meeting as described earlier, except for public hearings. If you'd like to speak on any of our agenda items or on any topic pertinent to city that's not included on the agenda, you haven't yet completed a signup form, please do so now and hand it to a staff member at the back of the room. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hands on Zoom at this time. I'd like to make everyone aware, the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted in the chambers, at the entrances of doors, and in summary, I'd ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others. Including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related items, uh, matters outside of an official public hearing. Public comment times for comments only, no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during business hours if you have any questions or concerns with the city. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and where you reside in Sandpoint City Limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public comment time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, John Hobday.
I don't live in the city. I live in Elmira.
Hi, Mr. Hobday.
Hello. My wife and I own the building next door across the alley. We've owned it for over twenty years, and we're trying to get Olive Street paved is my reason for coming here. Been working on the project for eighteen years and and it's at the corner of Olive and Superior. We've paid over seventy-six thousand dollars in taxes in to the city so far, for the twenty years we've owned it. And I requested the city repair the street eighteen years ago in a paper that I submitted to the city and uh, had it recorded eighteen years ago, and I'd like to submit that to the council, so you folks can read it later. I'm asking the city to pay for the improvements to Olive Street from the alley here to Superior. And I was told eighteen years ago, there's no money available for that. And I've also been told recently, there's no money available for it. Uh, finding no help for the project, I personally have paid for surveying my property and also engineering Olive Street for the the paving process. It was the thing I submitted earlier a couple of years ago to the city was was denied and, uh, but it was verbally okayed by the former uh, city engineer. And I've gotten the, I was in the process of getting the necessary permits only to find out the weather shut us down. That was a couple of years ago. By then, it was too late in the season to do the work. This year, I met with Brandon Staglin and Dan from Seven B Engineering and Ivan Emmick to try to move forward. I hired Dan to do the engineering and I believe he submitted the plan to Brandon now, and I haven't heard back on the on that. I've paid all the expenses for this and a lot, and all of it is on city property. It's not on my property. I've got the survey to prove that. Uh, I've got a estimate for eleven thousand for the engineering from Seven B, and I can't afford it. I I the building flooded a couple of years ago. The insurance denied my claim. And so I I paid the sixteen thousand dollars for that.
Top date, just a couple more seconds to wrap it up.
Anyway, I'm I'm requesting the city do the paving from the alley to Superior Street. That's what I would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobday.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe anyone else wishes to speak during general public comment time.
Uh, that will conclude the public comment portion of this evening meeting. Uh, next, moving on to the consent calendar. We're now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, total amount of bills is one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighteen cents, reflecting four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents for regable payables and one million nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents for payroll. Counsel, are there any questions or any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Espiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing and decision on the Turnstone Subdivision preliminary plat city applicant S twenty-four dash zero 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 two. I'll now recite the order and procedure for public hearings. First, staff will explain the subject of the public hearing. Then there'll be a presentation by the applicant or their representative. Any questions from the council should be directed to the applicant at that time. Next, we will be opening the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Those who wish to testify are required to complete a signup sheet. If council wishes to ask questions of the person testifying, those questions need to be posed before the person returns to their seat. The order for those who wish to speak will be as follows. Those in favor to the project, those neutral, and finally, those opposed. Uh, following that, there'll be rebuttal testimony from the applicant or their representative. Final questions may be asked of the applicant at that time. However, keep in mind, if new facts are elicited, the public will then be given the opportunity to comment on any new facts. The public hearing will then be closed for council deliberation. No new information may be provided after the hearing is closed. And questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations. For the record, any written comments received were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council if received in time to do so. Before we proceed, I will ask for confirmation from each counselor that you have no conflict or interest of interest or ex parte contact regarding this matter. Uh, Councilwoman Rule, President Rule, any ex parte or conflict?
No, I have no ex parte. I have no conflict. I was noticed as I live within the distance here. I've already had a discussion with legal. And I was informed that as long as I feel I have no conflict of interest on my decision, that I can sit and have a vote.
Excellent. Uh, Councilman Schreber?
I have none.
Uh, Councilwoman Duquette?
Yes, as I continue on my learning curve, I have to recuse myself.
Because?
Because I went to the site to try to understand the planning and zoning's information on ditching.
Okay. So you had ex parte or other information. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'll, I'm just gonna go online. Uh, I don't have any conflict. Uh, I can make an impartial decision if I'm called to vote. I will um, make everyone aware, the landowner was a former client of mine. Uh, I severed that relationship before becoming mayor. The current plan and project were developed by a a different set of consultants. I am only aware of what's in the packet, and I have no financial benefit uh, from whatever decision is made here, and I can make an impartial decision. Councilman Dick?
None.
Councilman Howard?
None.
And Councilman Espiro?
Uh, I have family members that live in the area, but it will not affect my decision tonight.
All right, excellent. I will now yield the floor to planning staff for an introduction of this application.
Good evening. Um, I'll, Darren, I'll introduce you really quick. Just for council's benefit, the uh, the planner who's gonna be presenting tonight is is the very, very familiar and esteemed Darren Fluke. Um, the reason our our new city planner, Bill, will not be presenting this is this is that this was Darren's project. Um, which went to the Planning and Zoning Commission actually on Bill's second day on the job at the city. So this will likely be the last time you see Darren at one of these hearings. And we would like to thank him. He's he's given almost two years of service to the city over the last five um, in between previous city planners, and he's been great to work with. So Darren, thank you, and I'll hand it off to you now.
Thank you, Jason, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think it's actually been five years over two that I've given this. But that's a minor point. I'm going to share my screen. I hope. Okay, so thank you again very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Darren Fluke, interim city planner, very happy to be here, um, and presenting this last application for you this evening. Tonight, we're gonna talk about PS twenty-four zero 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 two, which is Turnstone Subdivision. The property is located here on the south side of Ontario Street. That'd be just a couple hundred feet east of Division. Sure, you're all well familiar with the property. The request this evening in front of you is a three-point-four-eight acre site. The applicant's requesting eight single-family residential lots. Um, those lots range from fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three square feet up to twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven square feet. Those are fairly large by single-family lot standards. And I'm sure there'll be further discussion of this, but that was largely dictated by the conditions on the site, and we'll we'll get more into that in a bit. Um, the site will be served by a new public street, Turnstone Lane. That has thirty-two feet of width and a sixty-foot right-of-way. That's your standard um, road section within the city of Sandpoint. Um, you'll have curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the street, and the applicant will be required to upgrade Ontario Street along the entire frontage of the property. The property is zoned, residential, single-family, as you see here on the zoning map. It is on the edge of the RS zone. It's surrounded by mixed-use residential to the west and the commercial C zoning designation to the north. Um, you'll, the council will probably recall that a larger multifamily project was approved here just to the north of the site. Um, just within the last year. The plat, uh, as proposed by the applicant, looks like this. So you see the eight lots and the single access to Ontario um, from Turnstone Lane. Again, that will be a public street. What this is showing is a sixty-foot right-of-way. This does look overly large, just because what you don't see within this sixty feet um, is the curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides. Um, and so there's a thirty-two-foot road section, which would be, you know, centered through the middle of this and with curb gutter and sidewalks. So it does look bigger than it actually uh, will be when you're on the ground. I would note for the council that the commission voted to recommend approval of this application by a three-to-two vote. The project is subject to five conditions of approval, as you see here. I won't read those as though are, those are included within your staff report. Um, the commission did add a fifth condition, just that the final plat dimension and established grain adjustments is necess necessary to accommodate, um, the final drainage plan. There are really two issues that are on the table with this application and what what was an issue for the council, and you'll just hear some more about this this evening. Um, one is that the the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance both do discourage dead-end streets or cul-de-sacs like this one configured. What the council will note, however, is that there's extremely limited opportunity. Actually, I should say there is no opportunity for better connectivity within the project, given the configuration that's been handed down to us by previous councils and and developers. Um, really, this project or this property is isolated in its, uh, the way that Really, this project or this property is isolated in its, the way that it's situated and been surrounded by smaller development. And so there's really no opportunity to produce better connectivity within the project without actually condemning existing single-family residential development to make a connection, which just seems inappropriate and is not really supported by the code. The second issue is one dealing with drainage. I'm sure you'll hear some more about this this evening. And I'm going to defer to my colleague, Brandon Staglin, the city engineer, on that, and I think it's probably most appropriate if we wait and hear some of the testimony from the public on that, and I'm sure Brandon will have an opportunity then to answer questions and speak to the drainage at that time. So that is how I will choose to leave this for the council. If you had questions, I would take those now, and I'm sure Brandon or Bill would as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Darren. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Fluke at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Hey Darren, it's Justin Dick. A question for you, and I guess some clarification after watching the planning and zoning. When working with the developer from the city side, did we move away from a gritted street plan because of the challenges with the stormwater? There was some conversation that the developer was going to have higher density on there that might have created more impervious surface, which would have created more stormwater. But then there was also some talk that the developer, it was challenging to hook up to whatever services were existing on Mackey's Way and potentially, and I'm speculating here, maybe more expensive. So did the city, was the city the one that pushed the cul-de-sac versus the gritted streets? The gritted street path for this potential project?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I'm sure Justin will have, or not Justin, but Brandon will have more to say about this, but really, you're talking about two separate issues here. So the first, let's just deal with storm drainage. It is true that if the project were a higher density, it would have more impervious surface, and it would therefore have to accommodate more drainage. In working with the city engineer, the applicant determined that they were unable to accommodate more drainage off the site. And so the size of the lots and thereby the density of the project really was dictated by what could be accommodated for the storm drainage. The grid question, the connectivity question, is really a wholly separate question. And as you can see from the image on the screen, there really is no opportunity to connect anywhere else on any properties surrounding this property. Ideally, what would have happened in the past is that as the projects developed around this site, they would have been required to leave stub streets for access that would provide for future connectivity. Because that didn't happen, we today are left with really very few options. Actually, I should say, we're left with no options for connectivity within the project to the surrounding neighborhood. So I hope that answers your question. If it doesn't, please let me know, and we'll get into it a little deeper.
No, it does. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, along those same lines there, you mentioned that if neighboring properties had left stub streets, that perhaps there would be an opportunity for this to be something other than a cul-de-sac. Was there ever discussion about this property leaving a stub street so that any future redevelopment around the this property might have that opportunity in the future?
Mr. Mayor, council member, that's a fair question, and it's really one of the first things we look at when we get a project like this. In this situation, it honestly does not make any sense to leave a stub street coming into an existing single-family dwelling. There's both of the streets that adjoin this property. Let me just see if I can get you this. Are you seeing the GIS map now instead of my presentation? Okay, good. So what you see in the neighborhood is a private street here on the east side budding the property, and you see a private street here along the south, but it's separated by single-family dwellings. To require this applicant to leave a stub street into somebody's backyard or into an existing private street where there is no public access makes, made no sense. And so we did consider that, but it was not included as a condition of approval for those reasons.
I have the the prior comp plan, which is applicable to this project, I believe, pulled up, and I just wanted to read the the goal and policy pertaining to cul-de-sacs. It's goal H three policy A.
Excuse me, we want to be deliberations previous to. I'll make sure there's a question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so it mentions that cul-de-sacs must provide for continuous non-motorized connections between streets. How is that being accomplished in this case?
Mr. Mayor, council member, again, there are just really no opportunities to do that. The comp plan describes an idealized scenario that the city would like to develop in in the future, and we try to adhere to that as closely as possible when we see new developments. However, this is an infill project that is wholly subject to the conditions surrounding it. There really is no opportunity to provide additional connectivity from this site, as you can see on the GIS map. And so for that reason, we adhered strictly to what the ordinance says as far as what's allowed within the zoning designation and did essentially the best you can, given the conditions that we have on the ground.
Thanks, Aaron. And I just also remind the council that the comp plan is aspirational. The zoning and our subdivision standards are what are applicable to and the entitlement that the landowner basically gets. Sort of like you apply for a driver's license, you meet the standards. Although that was an aspiration, our standards don't require it, and our zoning doesn't require it.
Quick point of information. Is our duty here tonight to gauge whether this project is in contradiction to the comp plan?
No. I'll let counsel, legal counsel add on that, but no, it's, well, go ahead.
You're actually never evaluating whether or not it's in contradiction. You're just looking at whether or not it's consistent enough with, and it is an aspirational plan. And as I've indicated in previous meetings similar to this, a subdivision application that comes forward to you where your staff has not identified any violations of code in the application is an as a matter of right application. So you get to hear from the public with regards to their concerns on these because you have decided by code to allow two public hearings on a subdivision that's actually not required under the local land use planning act. This could be a one public hearing application, and then this would just be a public meeting. So that's a longer answer than you were looking for, but no, you're just looking at consistency or or consistent enough with your comprehensive plan. Your zoning code is your code.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Two quick questions. The first one, as I was reading our information in our packet tonight in regards to the drainage, and I know we're gonna get some comments on that. It said under, I'll read it verbatim. It said findings. The stormwater system shown on the preliminary improvement plans dated five twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, and the preliminary stormwater report dated four twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, both prepared by Clearwater Engineering states generally conform with the requirements of city code. Can you give us a definition? Does it meet the city codes or does it not? This term generally is a bit confusing. So can you give us some clarity?
And Brandon, before you answer that, I just wanna remind council, so preliminary plat, the applicant, the landowners coming in saying, this is what I want to do. It's not the final plat. So details and full-blown designs are very expensive. So typically, the applicant or the landowner is getting it up to a level where it's reasonable. It's logical. It makes sense to the engineers that it's going to work, but they don't go to that final design because that'd be very expensive. What if the subdivision weren't approved? You've just spent this money. So it's sort of an incremental step, preliminary plat, where you get it up to a level where the professionals can say, yes, it's gonna work. And then that's a condition of final plat approval, that they have to actually meet those standards and show that it works.
And what I can't tell with that language is whether it has the potential to meet the requirements or not, and that's the clarification I'm trying to seek.
Yeah, I think that was a good explanation from the mayor. They are at this stage. So for example, the code requires that the final stormwater plan include construction quality grading, showing the elevation of the invert of all of the pipes that they're gonna install. You typically don't do that till you get to final, you know, the construction quality drawings. They are not on the, that information's not provided on these preliminary drawings. So what I was getting at with that language and I don't know if there's like a legal definition of generally conforms with, but what I was trying to get at there is that the it doesn't technically meet all of the line items that are required for a final stormwater plan as submitted. But staff is required to review and make sure that they are meeting all of those items in the code for the final stormwater plan.
So just for my clarification, if we hypothetically were to approve this, the city staff would have to go make sure that it conforms to city code before the final approval is done. Is that correct?
Correct. Before they start construction on any of the improvements. And then those improvements are verified that they meet those plans by city staff before it goes to final plat.
Okay, thank you.
I would also add, Councilman Howard, condition for, prior to approval of the final plat, construction of all public improvements is required, including streets, curb, sidewalks, stormwater infrastructure, utilities, et cetera, and all other elements shown on the preliminary plat improvement plans titled similar engineering plans. All required at site improvements are subject to final approval of a stamped set of construction drawings issued into a public infrastructure permit and payment of required fees. So process-wise, this is sort of the, it's more than a mother may I, but it's getting us up to a level where they know what they have to do from here.
And a second question, and you can tell me whether or not this is an appropriate question, but as I was reading, and you stated earlier that in the planning and zoning meeting, it was approved by a three to two vote. Can, I tried to find some information on, for the two that voted against it, what was the rationale? And I couldn't find it. Can you give me a quick update or share with us? Those two that voted against it, what was their justification for voting against it?
It'd probably be Darren or Fonda, I'm guessing, Brandon.
Mr. Mayor, council member, I hate to speak for the commission. My recollection is that those opposed were more opposed to the lack of connectivity than, and than any other aspect of the project. Fonda may have another recollection on that.
The only additional comment by one of the commissioners that voted no in addition to the connectivity concern was that that commissioner wished it would have been a higher-density project.
And that for legal, that's typically not a valid rationale for voting no?
That is incorrect.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would point out that a higher-density project, although desirable at this location, would not have been able to accommodate the the volume of stormwater coming off of that.
Other questions for Brandon or Darren or?
Mr. Mayor? Probably not for Brandon. Darren, can you bring the satellite map back up? I just wanted to clarify, it was a long document. So as far as the sidewalk street improvements, there will be sidewalk and curb put on Ontario?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, or council member, that is correct. From, sorry, from along the entire frontage of the property.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. That is what I thought I read, and thank you.
And across walk to our crossing lane.
Yeah, I'll bring that up during deliberations.
Anyone else have questions for Brandon? I have a question for Brandon, and we can jump back. So Brandon, this area, based on my familiarity with Sandpoint, I believe it's called the Moran's Fourth Edition, which is basically the lots on the right of our screen here. Yeah. I commonly refer to this as our spring duck pond. As we learned from the other subdivision, water comes from the north, sometimes comes over Ontario, flows sort of between these houses and the Moran's Fourth, all the way down to Birch, and then goes into a pipe. Thanks, Darren. So kind of write down those, that boundary of that next set of homes, I believe. Councilman Rule lives right there, yes. It's existing. Is it a deficiency? Is that what we would technically call it? I don't wanna call it something it's not, but we do have a, there is a dedicated stormwater easement along those property lines. And I just want to ask and point out that, you know, there's a couple of ways for the city to solve this problem. One would be if we had the funding to do that on our own. But the other option is something called a local improvement district, where the owners could petition the city to do that work, put that whole stormwater area in a pipe, appropriate-sized pipe, and connect it to Birch and take it all the way to the lake. And then through that local improvement districts, those property owners who benefit from that work would pay annually on their property tax. So those are the two ways I envision the larger stormwater issue in this part of town being solved. Are you aware of any other obvious ways we could address sort of the broader off-site stormwater situation in this vicinity?
I would add that there is a possibility, although I have not looked deeply enough at the elevations to confirm this, but there is also a possibility of rerouting part of Ontario Street around where this new subdivision is proposed, and taking stormwater to the west, to Division, and doing a larger project that installed a new pipe north-south in Division to connect to that existing green line you see there, which discharges into the lake at the south end of Division.
Those colored lines are existing stormwater pipes, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it would probably require upsizing that pipe, and it would probably require installing new pipe in that section to the north there where you don't see any colored lines. That's an area where it flows through roadside ditches, which I don't think is ideal. I also want to add that the, this stormwater network, this part of our stormwater network takes a lot of off-site drainage. So Darren, if you could pan up a little bit so you can see the highway. There's a large section of the highway that actually drains down through the Mountain West Bank property and through the West Point Place project to the north, and then through this stormwater swell that we've been talking a lot about on the previous project as well. So all that off-site stormwater runs through the system and through all these backyard easements. So the key, in my opinion, is rerouting it away from a private stormwater easement and into the public right of way where we can maintain it and size it correctly.
Okay. And my last question is the standard, the requirement, the rule is that redevelopment flows on the site and post-development flows on the site. The water can't leave at a greater rate. Is that correct?
That's correct. What the code says is that you can't discharge off-site. That's correct. What the code says is that you can't discharge offsite to an existing.
Property.
Offsite drainage pattern. At a rate higher than what it was estimated to be before you started construction. So it's not the total volume of water. So it's not like. If you add a thousand gallons of runoff. That you can't discharge that offsite. It's if you add an additional five. Gallons per minute off the site, then that does not conform with code. And so the the point of the stormwater calculations. That the applicant is required to submit. One of the main parts of that is that they're required to demonstrate that they're not increasing. Rate of flow offsite after construction, usually in cubic feet per second.
Thank you. Any other questions come to mind for council? You'll be able to ask staff questions after the public and the applicant's. Presentation, but at this point, anything else? All right, thank you, staff. I guess moving on to the applicant's presentation. Wherever you're most comfortable.
Well, this is pretty comfortable, so maybe I'll just go right here.
Just get your name and. For the record, that'd be great.
Nicole Costello with Clearwater Engineering. Let me get my. Screen shared here. All right. So I am the design engineer on this project and representing the applicant. I just have a brief presentation because I think the staff report does such a great job summarizing the project and then. Darren took it a step further today and even provided most of my presentations, so I will keep it brief. I just wanted to touch on a few. Multi design items that led to this layout, the key items being the road layout, the lot layout and stormwater plan. Looking at the road layout. Again, this site is has been developed on all sides and. In looking to attain that street connectivity, I mean, we looked at north, south, east and west. So to the. To the west, we have Division Street. To connect there, it would require private land acquisition. To the east is all of Avenue, the same thing, would require private land acquisition. And then directly to the east is Mackey's Way, but that is a private driveway and. We did have a discussion, we we looked at this one in depth and. There was not unanimous agreement from those property owners to convert that to a city road or city street. And then also when looking at. The separation distance from intersections did not meet city code. The intersections would have been too close together. Then lastly, to the south, there's Vineyard Drive, which is also a private driveway and would have required private land acquisition. So that being said, we were kind of pinned with. A dead end option for this, or not kind of, absolutely, we're pinned with the dead end option for this for this parcel to be developed. Looking at the lot layout, again, just want to touch on the lot density. This project. These lots are. Larger than the minimum size permitted for this for this zoning. However, this project was. Previously presented a couple of years ago under. The price of density, it was sixteen lots and it was dismissed before it even made it to P and Z because the stormwater numbers just. They couldn't make it work. It became the primary issue for the site, so. Fewer lots means less impervious area. Again, as was discussed in depth already. Fewer lots, less driveways, less roofs, less road area, all of that means less impervious and less water. Additional impervious. Creating additional stormwater runoff that would be contributing to an already existing regional drainage issue. And lastly, the stormwater plan, just generally want to describe how. The proposed flow direction will look. When compared to the existing direction of flow. So the lots would generally be graded to flow towards the road. Then the road will drain to the south to a proposed storm inlet, which would then direct flow into. An infiltration trench. I'll go into depth on that a little bit more. That trench would be sized to, oh, sorry, to detain the entire twenty five year storm event as required by code. So. Anything discharging to the east would be essentially emergency overflow or anything greater than the twenty five year storm. And from there, it'd be discharged via a pipe to. An offsite drainage easement on the neighboring parcel. That would be a dedicated drainage easement drainage ditch for this runoff. Which would eventually flow to that existing ditch that mayor had just spoken about. Sort of an informal or a formal but poorly maintained existing drainage ditch. So looking at that from an aerial view here, this. Blue dotted line is that large. Drainage ditch that where all the flow currently drains to. So these patterns are following the existing drainage patterns. That southeast corner is the current low point. And we would just continue to drop to route drainage as it has historically. That would not change. We are proposing grass drainage soils on the east, south and west sides of the of the subdivision in dedicated. Drainage easements. Essentially, these would be. Proposed in excess of the required. Detention and treatment volumes for the site in hopes of also, you know, being a method to prevent. Runoff offsite and potentially even improve offsite runoff. And then lastly, this infiltration trench, it's a gravel subsurface gravel infiltration trench and it's sized. In this case would be sized to detain the entire twenty five year storm event within the voids of the of the gravel. So again, anything flowing offsite would be that greater than the required twenty five year storm event. So that. Is already going beyond the code. Or excuse me, that part is not going beyond the code. The fact that. We are not factoring in infiltration with the sizing of this trench and per a geotechnical evaluation performed last July. Believe it or not, this soil does perk just a little bit. And that would be sort of a factor of safety on this design, essentially that it's overdesigned and would both hold the entire storm. Without factoring in that infiltration that would also be taking place. So. I don't want to go too in depth on the stormwater. As you know, that's just kind of where we're at in the process, but I am here to answer any questions and the applicant is also here.
Yeah, Norris Boyd, I'm the. Developer. The infiltration trench that you were looking at, if you could put that back up, Nicole. That's not something that you normally see. What you're all familiar with is the dreaded pond that. The mayor was talking about, the retention basin. I have quite an extensive background in development. We manage quite a few properties that have retention. Facilities on them and they are a complete pain to take care of. There are mosquito nursery. The plant material that you put in it. They're always wet, so that it's difficult to maintain them. The inlets in that particular situation. Get clogged by the the plant matter that's in the retention basins if it doesn't get maintained. And they're pretty much a nightmare to to take care of. These infiltration trenches really work wonderfully. What you see there, you won't see when it's all done. It'll have grass on top of it. It'll be mowable. And again, sizing it so that it takes the the same amount of water that the retention pond does. Does away with a lot of the the ugliness of one site retention. So it's a really. We have been using it for about ten years and it really makes the environment around the area. You have problems with kids playing in it and again, the we're going to miss the ducks probably, but. And the moose won't have any place to drink, but other than that, the the site will be nice and clean.
Thanks, Mr. Boyd. Anything else from you before the council asks questions?
Nope, I'm, we are available for questions.
Excellent. Council members, questions for the applicant and their engineer? I'll I'll start. I I want to just jump to mine. I've never seen these function. I've heard of them. What happens in the winter? Do they freeze? Does the water still go through them? How does that work?
They don't freeze.
They're far enough below the frost line that you still maintain the capacity.
Curiosities, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
So the water table is notoriously high. What's to keep it from filling in with groundwater before any surface water makes it to it?
Yeah, great question. So during that geotechnical evaluation, we had the groundwater level assessed as well and so the. The trench is required to be designed so that the the base. Of the trench is at least three feet above the water table. So that that doesn't happen. And so that's why it's a larger. Essentially, we have a larger square footage, larger footprint and a. Shallower infiltration trench to avoid that.
So how do you accomplish being three feet above the water table, but also being low enough that it doesn't freeze?
That the freezing is just not an issue because you it you aren't going to have that full of of water in the freezing months. Does that make sense? I mean, even if it were to free, I mean, it doesn't. This is, I mean, I've been doing this for. I haven't been doing it for decades or anything like that, but anyone, that's never been an issue on any one of these that I've ever. Ever designed. Also, it's it's just gravel. So. If it were to freeze, it wouldn't. I mean, there's nothing that would be damaged.
Would it? Retainage and more importantly, percolation capacity if it were to freeze?
Sorry, would it what? Would it?
So if it's full of water and that water freezes, that water's not going to go anywhere, right?
Correct.
And then if we had a storm on top of that.
Yeah.
It would not no longer have any capacity, correct?
Right, but if. I I I just don't really know.
The retention, retention trench drains, okay?
Right.
So there is no water in it. So when you start to talk about it freezing, there's nothing in there for it to freeze. It's got air in it and stones. When you get a freezing situation, snow, there's not any moving water. So again, you're not concerned about it. As soon as it gets warm enough for the water to flow, it flows out of the stone. So. It's not a, it's not a tank. Of full of water. It's a tank full of stones and air. So there's really nothing in there that freezes.
It's it's gravel burrito wrapped in impermeable fabric. So I guess another thought is, another requirement for the code is that it needs to drain down within a certain, I think it's seventy two hours. And so with this infiltration rate, it would do that, which again. Would not allow for freezing.
That's what I wasn't grasping is that it drains. I.
Yeah.
Got that it has a drain out of the back.
Yeah, it is an infiltration trench.
Not a pond.
Yeah, and so I guess maybe that was confusing the way I said that. It is sized to detain the entire storm and the point that I was making with that is that it is overdesigned, which. Is a benefit to in that it exceeds the code, right? So. It will, it could detain the entire twenty five year storm event, but in that time, it will still be infiltrating. That water will still be moving, so it won't, it won't freeze. It's a great question. It's a very interesting question, but they don't freeze.
Yeah, the the other issue, the duck pond at the corner of Ontario, Ontario and. Mackey's, that'll be graded out anyway, so the water will not be collecting there. It'll be running back to this underground facility.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, so will there be any outflow out of this retention pond into the existing drainage? System that you had highlighted and the mayor had highlighted, is there going to be any outflow into that? In any situation?
If there were greater than the twenty five year storm event, so per the code, they're required to detain the twenty five year storm event. So if anything greater than that. Would overflow through that ditch and as it has historically, yeah. Although currently it's flowing that way regardless of the storm event.
The the stand, the standard is that we can't increase the flow. So in answer to your, the honest answer to your question is yes, there'll still be flow. But no more than the way it is right now and probably better, to be perfectly honest.
Yep. Yeah, most, most of the time it wouldn't flow. It sounds like it'll be retained. In those rare exceptions. You might have some.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Boyd and Nicole. We will now prepare to proceed with public hearing. As I recited earlier, I'll first call on those who wish to testify in support of this application, then those who are neutral, and finally, those who are opposed. Again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand it to staff. Please indicate on the form whether you're in favor, neutral or opposed. So the city policy provides that the presiding officer may allow gifted time during a public hearing. Or you may gift time to someone else. The person gifting gifting may do so only once and the person receiving time may only receive one gift. For a total of six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you begin speaking. And state the name of the person who gifted you their time. Otherwise, each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak in support of the project?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak as neutral to the application?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Douglas Lambrecht.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity for Mayor Grim and the council. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Doug Lambrecht. I live at thirteen sixteen Vineyard Drive. My wife Deborah and I. Have resided there for twenty years. The reason I'm neutral is I understand that it's private property. The owner has the right to develop the property as they do and as they wish with. In the codes, so required with the city's limits of Sandpoint. My biggest concern, I am very appreciative of the discussions that we're having currently about storm drainage because that is. Probably the major concern for myself and all of my neighbors along. Vineyard Drive. That drainage system is refreshing, but once again, the concern I have. With it flowing south and then east to an open drainage system is that that. Open drainage right away, as it has been described, does freeze over. And when that freezes over, if there is outflow that flows south, that water will then back up. Each of those properties along Vineyard Way. Drain their crawl spaces out into that drainage ditch. That is behind the property lines to the north of Vineyard Drive. And when that drainage stops, then it backs up and we have a continuous circulation of water from under our crawl spaces. Back out towards that drainage ditch. So I would really like to see that. The engineering part of that, which is being addressed, which is great, that they ascertain and can guarantee that flow. That doesn't increase and prohibit us from draining our crawl spaces to that designated drainage ditch on our northern. Northern border that it backs up because then it has the potential to create damage to all of our. Properties mainly because we have to have crawl spaces. You can't do on grade because of the water table. So it is important to me, my wife, and I think the residents of that neighborhood and the adjourning. Neighborhood as well that have the easement that goes south to Birch to also. It being above ground that the winter months, we all know too well are freezing thaw. And when that major. Throwaway freezes in the winter and then we have the the Chinooks that come through in the February months, we get an outflow of water. So that is my major concern. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And then also one last comment is I also have a concern about high density development on these lots. once they are established, so that they don't have the owners don't have the opportunity to build multiple high density housing within a lot that's designated within the that subdivision. There are many examples that are along division that you can see where property owners somehow have been putting in many homes within their own lot and doing multiple stories with those. So I would appreciate that. It remains true to the variance of a single home dwelling on each of those lots.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, are there questions for Mr. Lambert? Counsel? Um, thank you very much for your testimony, uh, Mr. Lambert, and um I'll address your second question um later.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Anyone else neutral, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Molly O'Reilly.
Good evening, Mrs. O'Reilly.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Um, let me talk about connectivity, walking and biking. Um, you can't aren't gonna be able to get through on cars, but it should be better with sidewalk on Ontario. If you require that the sidewalk continue to Mackey's Way with a curb ramp there, it'll be a lot more usable than if it just sort of ends a little short as the drawings appear to show it right now. So that's not a very much of an extension to make a usable stretch of sidewalk. I don't, the drawings in the packet didn't make it clear to me where things were happening across Ontario. There's one curb ramp showing crossing Ontario at Turnstone Lane. In my ideal world, and sometimes required by the city, there would be one on each side of Turnstone Lane, but I don't know where there's going to be traffic exiting on the far side. There's some driveways there now, but I, just walking by to a meeting on the other side, couldn't tell what was where. But I would encourage that people be able to cross the street as much as possible at the corners. And ice on sidewalks is a really substantial problem. If in this city, I've broken each wrist that way. If it's possible to not have drainage coming to the street over the sidewalk, that would be really good. I don't know what you do about that. I don't know if you require some ditching and some culvering underneath. But if all this drainage is coming over the sidewalks on Turnstone Lane, that sidewalk's not gonna be very usable for a lot of the year. The proposal right now is to take the stormwater south. If there's any chance you might want it to go north ultimately, remember it's cheaper to put pipes under streets before you pave those streets. So you might just want to um keep that in mind, but please don't let this property drain there over your sidewalk on Turnstone or the hospital will be getting way more customers than it needs. Thank you.
Give me Sir Riley. Anyone else neutral, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Researcher, you wish to speak? You wish to speak?
Good evening.
I'm good evening, Gary Reiser. Was at the last meeting and said most things I needed to say, but uh the water is the big thing. And whether they can get rid of it to the south, it's a foot deep out from my place, which is the first one uh west of their property. And uh, the water is the big thing. We all know it. It all drains. It's been a that's the reason it hasn't been built on for thirty years is the water. And it's not going away unless they drain it away. And just having a holding pond that they're calling a ditch is not gonna work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiser. Anyone else neutral, Adam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
There are members of the public who are opposed who'd like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Molly, or I'm sorry, Mary Rogers.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, I am Mary Rogers. My address is thirteen fourteen Vineyard Drive. My house is directly at the very end of the south drainage area. So as my neighbor said, we have a ditch. I have a ditch at the uh north end of my property. In the spring, as you all know, we have flooding in South Sandpoint. So I have a sump pump that I drain all my water into the ditch. And as my other neighbor will speak to, the ditch, the ditch that goes nowhere. So we have no flow, so I don't really understand the the drainage system sounds lovely, but when you have a horizontal area, I don't understand how the water flows to the uh east. Yeah, I don't understand that. I do understand physics, but that doesn't make sense to me. Um, so I'm very concerned about my um standing water situation that pretty much goes on from uh on and off December through June. And so I'm opposed to the current situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Catherine Fairfield.
Good evening, Catherine.
Members of the council, Mayor. Um, thank you for the opportunity to voice my concern about the proposed project. I um live at the almost the eastern extreme south of that property. And I accumulate um up to twelve feet across and over a foot deep of water every spring lasting sometimes until mid-June, during which time the mosquitoes multiply, becomes a swamp and scummy pond, and uh so I cannot enjoy my backyard. So I'd like to begin by saying that while there are a lot of apartments being built right now, it is nice to see some beautiful single family homes slated for this property. But my concern too is the discharged stormwater from the three and a half acre parcel. Um, I provided each of you with a uh plat. Wiley's, no use plat, I think it's called. And which shows the homes along Vineyard Drive. And at the northern extreme of that, you see what's called a twelve foot private drainage easement. Private meaning that it belongs to the property owners there and for their exclusive use and need. Um, I verified with North Idaho Title that there is no express written or recorded giving of this property or the use of this property to anybody else. But the plans for your stormwater drainage show five different outfall pipes directly leading into this drainage ditch, which is a trespass, of course, but beyond that we would never get rid of the water. And my home sits about from my drainage ditch and my yard sit um three and a half feet below the developer's property. And were he to build, I don't, I have a question about the um Catch Basin that is designed to be three and a half feet deep and thirty six by twenty feet in dimension. And I'm hoping that that would at least have an impermeable bottom, because otherwise it puts the seepage right at the level of our drainage ditch. So um I think it's been voiced or emailed by a number of people that live around this property that it is primarily clay. It does not absorb water. And um I actually spent twenty two hundred dollars last April, May to have a two French drains put along my drainage ditch.
Kathy, we'll have to have you just wrap that up, your three minutes unless someone's donating time to you. Your time is
I'm sorry.
Your time is up, so you have to wrap it up unless someone's gonna donate three minutes to you. You get three minutes. Um
Oh, I'm done?
Yeah, can you wrap it up?
Fast?
Yes, I know.
Okay, well please help us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has signed up to speak on this matter.
Thank you. Uh, is there rebuttal from the applicant's representative?
I own the property that is on the uh southeast corner of the site that we're talking about. So I'm very familiar with the water problem. There is a ditch that runs along the back of those property, the existing properties. What we're proposing in our stormwater plan is another one on our side of the property line, which will stop a significant amount of water that flows into their their area. And that we are working with on our retention device. The problem is the maintenance of the uh stormwater ditch beyond these properties. The water doesn't have anywhere to go because the ditch isn't maintained, and I've complained about that myself. So I'm very understanding of what they're talking about. But our plan again is another ditch that will stop any water that that we were pushing onto their ground, stop it from getting to theirs. Where it goes, when it's, once it gets out close to Olive, that's your guys' problem. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Boyd, can you just uh
Sure.
Nicole, hold up there and um can I just ask staff to pull up um in the staff report sheet seven of ten, just so I have a clear understanding of what we're talking about?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're asking for the staff report?
Yep, sheet seven or ten, it it's it shows the uh the detention and the whole site sort of uh it's it's on, it's sheet seven of Turnstone Subdivision Stormwater Plan.
Okay.
For engineering.
Let me go to the actual stormwater plan here. Okay, bear with me. I'm almost there.
Yep, yep, that's it. Melissa, can you blow that up a little bit?
So just to be clear, you're you're saying you're putting in a whole new ditch. We just heard from these people here, you're putting a whole new ditch on your side, hiked to here. And then, Mr. Boyd, you own that property and it's gonna flow in another ditch onward from there.
Yeah, I provided a right away on my property to get it to the main ditch that's running north and south.
The
And there there are no outflows, as was described, south into these properties?
Nope, the only pipe outfall is shown right there where it leaves the parcel to that, the new dedication on.
Thanks, I just want to, I just want to clarify that.
There's just a single pipe outfall proposed.
Any other questions in the council for the uh applicants or the rep? This'll be your last chance to ask them. Um, questions? Any new information would require uh if you're gonna talk about Indian artifacts or some something, you know, it would require public testimony again, but
I I do have a question, Mayor. Um, can you give us some more commentary of what, how you think this should benefit those properties to the south of yours?
So I have not assessed the properties to the south. I don't know exactly what the concerns are, so I can't speak too much to that, and I can't guarantee that anything's going to get better. The goal is that it remains the same and doesn't get worse, and hopefully, hopefully it benefits them, but
Let me ask a more specific question then.
Sure.
Today, are we to believe that there is runoff from the existing land today that's running to the south into their private ditch?
Based off the survey, the topographic survey that was completed, it's primary flowing southeast where we are proposing the outfall.
But if it's flowing south and east, some of it presumably should fall into their private. Right? If it was going to the north, maybe questionable, but the fact you said it drains south and east, some of the properties there on the south side, maybe on the east side of the property should be seeing, I would guess today, some amount of water coming off your property. How much? We don't know. Once you go ahead.
And what we're proposing would stop that.
Yeah, and can you tell, give us the dimensions of the retention system that you're putting in along your side of the south?
Or the the ditch?
Yes.
Be a grass swale. The grass swales are proposed on the east, west, and south sides, essentially a moat around the subdivision. And that would be what's proposed, it would be a five foot wide drainage easement all the way around. So it'd be a three foot or excuse me, yeah, three foot wide ditch that would just be six inches deep, just a V ditch, grass swale.
On the east, east or west, east, uh west, south, and east sides of the property?
Correct, those are the the red ordering, all three sides, correct.
And then all the outflow off of the property into your stormwater retention? How big is your stormwater retention?
It's thirty six by twenty by three point five.
Thirty six feet, twenty feet wide.
Three and a half feet deep.
And then the outflow of that
Preliminary calcs.
Okay, and then the outflow that goes into a pipe that goes over to your corner of the this property and your personal property goes into a new drain along your southern side?
An open ditch.
Open ditch, and then hits the the mosquito ponds that we all talk about.
Where it is currently flowing as well. So if nothing were to be done to the site, it would continue to do that.
So is there any situation where the water flow off your property will be worse than it is today?
Not allowed, so that would, no.
What is, what assurance can you give these citizens to the south that that won't happen?
My license, I stamp it and I, that is my, that is my duty as a professional engineer to say that my calcs and my my assessment is that that will not happen.
And and once you put in the moat and then the retention, what kind of maintenance do you have to do to make sure that that functions properly in the future?
Sure, so that I will leave that up to the applicant. If there's going to be an HOA, anything like that, but it would be, it could be put on the property owners, it could be, however that ends up being worded in the subdivision agreement. Um, but it's pretty minimal maintenance because it is just going to be an open grass swale. I mean, if there's debris in there from there aren't a lot of trees out there, but if there were limbs or something like that, pull those out. That's really it. It's pretty minimal maintenance. And because it isn't within a dedicated drainage easement, the city would have the authority to go and enforce that.
Yeah, the dimensions of it and and we had a detail on it, but the dimensions of it, and it'll be grass, so you can mow it without any problem. And that really will be the primary maintenance that's required.
And does that maintenance then fall to each property owner?
Yeah, each individual landowner. Well, it it's part of his backyard, so we're gonna make the assumption that he can, that he'll mow it or she will mow it. And if they don't, then the city can force them to mow it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Dick.
Uh, to touch on something that Molly brought up, when we're talking about the curb and sidewalk on the
Sure, I, they did not give us that the piece of paper that she was talking about, so I'm not sure.
Oh, that's okay. No, I'm actually talking about the uh curb and sidewalk on the on the south side of Ontario. Does that actually connect to all the way over to Mackey's Way then?
Oh, it goes to the corner of
It goes right to the corner of Mackey's Way then.
It goes to the end of the, it just goes to the end of the property line, and Mackey's Way doesn't actually
Line up.
It doesn't line up, so
It does stop short.
We just
Do we know what that distance is? Are we talking six feet, eight feet, ten feet?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, she also brought up another point too in terms of Okay, uh, she also brought up another point too, in terms of ice on the sidewalks, is it just a curb and sidewalk and we would hope that the water would flow down onto Turnstone Drive?
I'll actually say I think that was a great point, and I think that is something that we would look at further.
But it hasn't been investigated today in terms of drainage from there, okay?
Well, it, it's a typical road curb, so there's going to have to be an awful lot of water coming down that road. Up onto the sidewalk, because your elevation change is about four and a half inches, so. That's, that's a considerable flow.
Yeah, I think it means drainage from the lots over the sidewalk, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, there is a, a crosswalk proposed to get you across Ontario. And we're going, yeah, there it is, and we're going to do that, so we'll get them over to Ontario where the sidewalk is continuous. The whole way to over to Olive.
And why was it proposed on that side versus the other side, or not both?
Well, the sidewalk on the north side is existing when Ontario is existing.
But why the.
Isn't there sidewalk on both sides of the street on Turnstile Drive or Turnstone Drive?
Correct.
Yeah, Turnstone will have sidewalks, there'll be sidewalks along the the border with Ontario. But because the sidewalk does not go beyond Mackey's and go the, the, off of the property line the other way. We've proposed a, a crosswalk to get them over to sidewalk that does do that.
And and Councilman Dick, I think with all, you can see it now, Darren must have it pulled up, you can see all those entryways on the north side, they're just not sure what the final. Alignment over there is going to be, so you wouldn't want to put a, a ramp going into a future driveway.
And there, we did have brief discussion, and this is still. A potential possibility, instead of crossing there. Potentially the city paying to extend the sidewalk further to the west and connect into division. There was any funds available, there'd be a safer option to cross there versus in the middle of.
We have another item on the agenda tonight that might solve that.
Throwing that out there, that was, that was a thought.
And Mr. Mayor, one more clarifying question, your property doesn't go all the way to the Mackey, to the private drive.
Yes, it does.
Yours does?
My personal property, the development. Yeah, the development goes right to the driveway. The, the edge of the driveway is right on the property line.
But it looks like that apron is on the right of way, you know, to reduce or increase the radius.
Okay, so my, my question then is, why wouldn't you take the sidewalk all the way to Mackey? Why, why are you leaving it short then?
We could put in an, an accessible ramp there, I think the challenge is that it's a ramp to wear.
Sir, I'm not sure where you're asking for the sidewalk to go.
The, the front edge.
Is this.
Ramp, yeah.
This, this is Mackey Way, right? And you're put, you're put.
Sidewalk go the whole way over?
Well, it stops and it just.
Yeah, it stops at the, at Mackey's Way, yeah.
Would you, you mean like a ramp there or just a sidewalk, just terminate there?
I, I'm only asking the clarifying question of one of our. Public comments that said the sidewalk ends before it gets to Mackey Way, is that not true?
It goes right to the property line.
Okay.
The, the exhibit shows it stopping at the edge of the asphalt, but.
Yes, if you want to put a ramp there, no problem.
Is, if you, if the sidewalk were to ninety right there, we would just be cutting into that approach.
Right.
That would be.
We can certainly do.
It makes it at least an, an off, a nice off-ramp for somebody that's trying to use that part of the sidewalk, correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions in the council for the.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
There's going to be a lot of redundancy here, but then quite a few of these meetings where it is helpful, also not for us, but for our citizens, the, the concern is excess of water flow. And what we're hearing tonight is you're legally bound to make sure that what you build here does not exceed what's already allowed and already there, correct? And you've. Gone through great measures to make sure that that is going to stay as it's.
Correct.
Right, because the concern is an excess.
What happened?
Yeah, so it's also just clarifying for citizens, they may not understand all the jargon, I'm trying to keep it simple for everybody, that's great, thank you.
Excellent, hearing no other questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Because the public hearing hasn't been closed yet, there were a couple of the members of the public who indicated a desire to speak.
I defer to you, is that my discretion?
Public hearings not closed, so.
Excellent.
What will happen is though, just for clarity.
We'll get to rebut.
Yeah, they are allowed to speak, and then the rebuttal and questions from council will be restricted to only.
The new testimony.
New information that is brought by these commenters, so if it's redundant commentary, that's not an invitation for rebuttal or additional questions on the same. Topics we've covered, it'll be any new information that they bring.
Thank you, legal. Thank you, applicants.
Joel Espiral?
Not me.
Senior.
Anyway.
Good evening.
I'm Jolly Spurro. And so anyway, I live right in the end of Burke Street. And right where the water ends, and I just want to say I'm very open if it's the city or the people who's. Dealing with that, if they want to put underground piping, you know, like a drainage go all the, all the way straight, I'm open. To, you know, to put my property, they can work on it and, and hopefully, you know, that can be right.
Yeah.
So, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Espiro, we will explore those options, whatever happens tonight, because I know that's. An, an area that needs some attention. Is that it?
One other, Carrieella Grace?
Hello, Ms. Grace.
I'm Carrie LaGrace, and I live at Whiskey Jack Circle, and I have sold three houses in this area, so I've sold Mary Rogers her house. And I sold Kathy Fairfield her house, and I sold Norris Boyd his house, so I'm familiar with the area, I don't know if you want to pull up the aerials or not, but I'm pretty easy to talk about this. Vineyard does have a drainage issue, but I'd like to just say to Kathy and Mary, and we can talk personally later too. I think that once a new drain field system is put in and done properly, done technically, by law, according to what you guys like to say, it's going to help their drainage. Situation, because there's not going to be any water flow from that area directly north of where they are. So I just want to say I'd also worked with Norris Boyd for a while, and he has great skills in a lot of developments, and he'll do it right.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grace.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, applicant, any rebuttal to that new comment? Council, any questions? Yeah. With that, I will now close the public hearing. Council may ask questions of staff during deliberation. And sample motions are provided on the dais, and just. As you get, get close to making a motion one way or the other, just to remind you, if you can express your findings and facts, your conclusions of law, why you are making your motion based on the. Record and the information in the staff report, that is greatly appreciated. Any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
As we talked about earlier, the, the greatest concern is excess of water on these properties, we're hearing tonight that. It cannot exceed what it already is, but it could potentially be better. I think the, the fear that I've heard is what if the calculations are wrong and it does exceed on a regular basis, not an excess. Amount of rain or, or stormwater, what would be the legal actions taken in that? Case, maybe this is a better question for legal, let's say just the calculation didn't work out, it's not, life happens and it didn't work out, who, what do we do?
Dude, just to clarify, so if the twenty-five-year storm is, occurs, twenty-five year lasts, the requirement of code. And the rate of flow exceeded the redevelopment state, what would happen?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning the, I'm just, just to ease the minds.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
What, what, or what do we?
I mean, I have a thought, but I'll let the engineer and the lawyer speak, because I'm neither of those.
I'll say from an engineering perspective. These calculations that I'm talking about are theoretical, I have to admit that. And I, I don't think there's any way you could say that they are. The calculations in the stormwater plan guarantee that the size of their swale is going to be adequate. For every storm at all the time, and it's never going to overflow, or it's never going to have a problem. But. What, what it does require is a certain set of engineering standards to be met.
Right, and that's my question, if it becomes a regular thing, what, what do we do, right? We know God is not going to flood the earth again, so if we do, we have bigger problems than that, so what would be the legal action we take? Is there any?
I guess I need to clarify, who are you asking for legal advice on behalf of?
The concerned citizens that are here tonight.
So, so you're wanting us to provide a legal opinion to the citizens that provided public comment in this public meeting?
Correct.
That's not appropriate.
Not appropriate.
I, I can say if there is a, if, if something, if the citizens feel like. The engineering calculations that have been conducted by the applicant's engineer are incorrect, such that there's been negligence that occurred, it's going to be a civil action between property owners. So my obligation would be to provide you advice with regards to the city's exposure here, and the city doesn't have exposure unless. Brandon is intentionally miscalculating when he does the review during the administrative approval process of the stormwater plan. Second to that, I'd like to remind the council that the stormwater is not an element of your approval process tonight. That's been explained to you in detail at a preliminary plat application phase, simply because it has been a concern of the citizens, and we wanted to make sure that you had enough information. To be able to know that stormwater was already being addressed, even though it is not required to be addressed at this stage.
I just wanted you to say that, I wanted it to be heard, and that's great, thank you.
Excellent, any other council deliberations, if not, there's any council members that wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
You have something to, I'm gonna, I have comments.
Yeah, me too. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to talk about INLU fees at this stage.
There's, there's none that would apply as far as I see this application right now, so. In terms of sidewalks, that's the only INLU program we have right now.
Yes, precisely, we, we recently passed an ordinance allowing the engineer to, our city engineer to. Use his discretion in requiring a property owner to pay INLU fees rather than putting in a sidewalk, and there is. Discussion about extending, the city paying to extend the sidewalk. From this development. In either direction really, and it occurs to me that perhaps that that would. Benefit our city more than a sidewalk that's essentially on a private driveway servicing eight property owners. And I don't know if it's appropriate to ask for that to be a. Condition of approval that they agree to pay INLU fees.
I, I like where you're thinking, I live on a cul-de-sac myself that does, doesn't have sidewalks, the volumes of traffic are very low, and. People actually walk and gather and talk in the street, I would punch it to legal.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, if you look at that section of code that we just recently revised. It did before and it still does today say very specifically that you're not allowed to use the INLU fees. In lieu of building sidewalk for subdivisions, it's only for building permits, so it, we, you would be violating that section of the code. As it stands right now. But it is possible that we spend INLU fees to extend the sidewalk, you know, that have already been paid into the, that quarter section. To extend the sidewalk further to get more connectivity.
To division.
To division or to Oliver.
Mr. Mayor.
Something like that.
Thank you. Uh, Council President.
I, I kind of cut you short because my, one of my main comments there was, I'd love for you to pull the map up again, but I don't know if Darren's with us. I would just like to kind of. Point out that this would be a great place for maybe connectivity and safe routes to schools. Because if we actually had sidewalk on that other side, which we've had people come before council and ask for. And that, that street is a collector street, so it's not a residential street, so it would be appropriate for that, and it's. Two small chunks that would connect all of the charter school, it would also connect middle schools, high schools. North Shore neighborhood, the other neighborhood, if you finish that piece of sidewalk. With ramps, you would connect across Olive and all the way down to the park to the football field, so I think a safe route to school. Would be incredibly appropriate there, and then my, my other concern is, is it's a bittersweet thing to say we're going to put a sidewalk and a flasher there. We've had lots of discussions with the ADA that mid-block crossings are not necessarily appropriate nor safe for all people. There's going to be a lot of driveway exits on the other side, so I think it even increases, decreases the safety there. And looking at the whole bigger picture of this, potentially putting a stop or an RFP down there by Levina, so it would be a straight shot for kids. And then going up to an elementary school, as I know this is outside the scope a little bit, but I'm going to go there anyway. Because they turn and ride the sidewalk that's been built in front of Luther Park, and then they ride an open street where there is no sidewalk. Where each one of those cross streets they have to stop for while the cars do not have to stop traveling north south to get to their elementary school. So as this develops and moves forward, I'd like you to keep that in mind, and I know you're not our sidewalk guy, but. And then I also am very appreciative of your expertise and understanding of. The drainage and the need to probably put appropriate storm drainage in the rest of Ontario and connect it with division. Because of all of that commercial property that is draining into a subpar area. And then for institutional and historic contexts, when Cody Van Dyke was here, I understood that the. The size of piping at Burke Street that then takes all of that water to the outflow is undersized. And it was probably appropriately sized when the Moran's additions went in, and those houses on Olive were built in the sixties. But since then Luther Park, which was paved, and then the Bank West property and all of that is now draining in that direction, and I know that you're very aware of that, so I'm just kind of sharing this with the public. But I do think it makes sense if we could find funding to appropriately size pipe, and then to get to my point would be. If it's possible to grade the, the new to potentially be street, if all this is passed and figured out. So that it does drain to Ontario and could eventually get into that system and go a different direction. Maybe the properties, because of the sloping, would still go south, but the street in and of itself. Would drain north to like you, what you had suggested, so I just want to thank you for your expertise and, and vision in seeing that. And then I'm just going to say that I'm disappointed in. Previous code and maybe not a clear vision of how Mackey's Way was put into. The private drive that it is, that's not code standard now, we would not allow that development to happen, so it's too bad, there's no way we can correct that at this point. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I actually am in charge of the sidewalks too, so just. The, the crossing that we're putting there at this new intersection, I actually would not. I would disagree that it's a mid-block crossing, it's an intersection, it just happens to be a T-intersection, and my interpretation of. The. What we used to call ADA, which actually just technically applies to buildings, but now it's called another acronym, PROAG, the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, which. Is the federal guidelines for. Accessibility in public rights of way. Including sidewalks and crosswalks, it actually requires. Pedestrian crossings at all intersections. Pedestrian crossings at all intersections. I would classify this as an intersection, so I'm requiring a crossing. Um, however, I do understand that it's a non-signalized. Intersection. So in other words, there's it's a through street. Those T-intersections do pose an additional. Um, problem with pedestrians. Um, but. We also, our code also requires that this subdivision connects to the. Rest of the public sidewalk network, and that's the reason why. The um, that crossing is proposed where it is. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any council members wish to make a motion?
Hmm. Uh, maybe just a little deliberation here. I think uh, the way I've kind of looked at this here is we do need housing. I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors and the drainage issues. But those drainage issues are existing right now pre-development of this plot right here. I do like the stormwater design, and I think we might actually, the neighbors may actually benefit from the stormwater catch basin and the swales on the east, the south, and the west side. Um, not as concerned about the cul-de-sac. I think Commissioner Hastings said uh, the time for gridded streets. Would have been best done twenty-five to thirty years ago. There's only one other property that I know of this size that could be developed into single-family residential, and that's just north of the Mountain View. Uh, cemetery that's also going to have challenging stormwater, so. This might be the great design that kicks us off for developing something there um. And hopefully solving some of those challenges. I think the only stipulation that I would make sure that we get in there is that we do have a ramp on the north. Uh, west side uh, connecting to Mackey's Way up on that sidewalk. Is that right?
Northeast.
Northeast, excuse me. Uh, over to Mackey's Way, but I would be willing to make a motion of approval with that stipulation this evening.
Uh, I would just defer to uh, legal. Is that something that we need as a additional condition or can staff work that out hearing and the applicants agreed to do it and we can work that out in the?
You do not need it as a condition of approval on the preliminary plat and staff will confirm that during design and administrative approval of sidewalk and. Frontage improvements that 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 ramp is in existence because there's more that goes into it than just.
Thank you. Um, did I hear you were willing to make a motion?
Does anybody else want to deliberate before? I'll make a motion to approve. I move that the Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code. Approve city application number PS two four dash zero zero two. Double penny partners request for approval of a preliminary plat to subdivide a three point four acre parcel into eight single-family residential lots. At twelve oh seven Ontario Street. The approval is based off the staff report. Uh, based on the staff report and the relevance, evidence and testimony contained in the public record and is subject to conditions of approval as noted in the staff report.
I moved.
Uh, moved by Dick, second by Spiro. Um, legal, any need to add findings of facts or is the evidence in the re- record sufficient?
The deliberations have sufficient findings.
Uh, this motion in a second, any um discussion? Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next is a proposed resolution to include a question on November ballot for the voters to decide on new local sales tax in Sandpoint.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, would you like a break? Uh, we'll take a five-minute recess, seven forty-four. Meetings resumed at seven fifty-one PM. Uh, next on the agenda is item twelve. Proposed resolution to include a question on the November ballot for voters to decide on new local sales tax in Sandpoint. Um, council members, uh, I just want to thank you for entertaining this opportunity. Um, as I mentioned in my brief uh, letter in the staff report. Um, I believe this is our 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 best uh, opportunity to. Uh. Create a dedicated street funding revenue source. Um. Although it's it's difficult to determine exactly the rate of growth of our retail sales over the next twenty-five years. Um, what we do know from two thousand twenty-one is that um, the retail sales in June, July, August and September. Uh, jump significantly attributed to um. Uh, visitors to our community. So um, without going into too much length, what's before you tonight is a. Ballot measure resolution that would establish a uh, one percent retail sales tax through December. Thirty-first, two thousand forty-nine to fund street pavement, ceiling widening, reconstruction and associated stormwater infrastructure. Sidewalk pathways, pathway improvements, including maintenance and reconstruction and extension. Provide connectivity and increase ADA accessibility and safety. Alleyway improvements and maintenance, and finally the other two elements um. D property tax relief to standpoint property owners for excess revenue received and administrative cost um. Collections uh, for collections of the tax. Um. The projection, um, this isn't precise. Uh, no one knows what the economy is going to do over the next twenty-five years, but assuming a. Uh, two and a half percent annual increase in in um, collections. By two thousand twenty-six, we might be collecting um, three million dollars about a year. Um, looking at total collections over this period, it's reasonable to think we might collect around fifty-five million dollars. Um, from Holly's presentation uh, at the last meeting, uh, what she called option. Uh, two, which is a rehab to national standards. Let me just make sure I have this right. Um. Uh, option two rehab to national san- uh, option one rehab uh, with sidewalks. Uh, she projects that to be. Um, a- about a um. There we go. Um, total about forty-two million dollars. Um. Over over the city. Um, that would leave us, if these projections are correct, about another twelve million to do sidewalks and alley maintenance. I'm not proposing taking on alleys for snow storage, but I think um, certainly some of our residents would appreciate the alleys to be graded, maybe some gravel. Um, if we do have hard-surfaced alleys, maybe some, you know, pot hole repair and whatnot. But uh, in general, what's before you is the term, uh, the projects that this would fund. And a uh, plea to you to uh, support this and let our residents tell us what they think of it. And of course, if they um, you know, uh, fail to reach the sixty percent threshold. Uh, I would uh, imagine we would do a robust survey to understand what elements of this they liked or didn't like. Um, maybe take a second bite at the apple uh, to address uh, the very valid points that uh, Council President Rule brought up. One of the most, I think, um, intriguing aspects of this is that um, this would potentially free up a half million dollars a year. From our general fund that we're currently dedicating to roads. And uh, as you all know, after going through the budget process, um, we are desperately in need of revenue to even maintain our benefits. Step increases and hopefully uh, address the salary um, inequality that causes many of our. Police staff and others uh, to work two jobs to live in this community. So. Uh, with that, I'd entertain any questions and um. You discuss.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment about the spelling of alleyway. I emailed you that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a correct way to spell alleyway? I'm just asking.
I defer to my expert clerk. I am.
Now fixed.
It's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I guess on that maintenance and improvements. I don't, yeah, I don't know that money should go to the alleys, but.
Well, I know some are um, you know, we don't maintain them right now.
No, I know.
Um, some of them just need a bucket of gravel and maybe a grader. I have no intention of plowing them um, or paving all of them, that's for sure. Um, but I think it gives us enough leeway in the language to put some money towards um, our alleys that need a little bit of help. Obviously, I won't be mayor in two thousand forty-nine, so I hope to God.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, Council President.
Um, question for um, Zach. Are there any restrictions on what you can use um? Um, a tax like this for?
Sir. The local option tax is really pretty broad.
Oh, you're not on.
How about now?
Yes, thank you.
So the the uh, local local option taxes uh, are really pretty broad. Um, so the uh. I mean, the short answer is yes, certainly there are some restrictions, but um, the restrictions are provided for in the resolution and in the ordinance itself, uh, should it be passed. Uh, and it it it's limited to um, what's provided for here.
Right, I just mean in the broader sense of, let's say. We were deciding to not do a street sidewalk type of local option tax, like historically we've had one that was recreation-based. I'm just wondering um, if there's, as long as it's a city service, it's a reasonable. Use of a local option tax within reason.
Yes, so for all intents and purposes, the city has wide discretion on how to apply the local option taxes.
Okay, and so I guess I would just put out there um, in front of the council that um. I don't feel like um, the mayor has thoroughly answered um. What other city services um. Maybe in dire need by the time we get twenty-five years down the road and we've um. Used all of this just for streets and sidewalks, and I am such a proponent for sidewalks, pathways. And all the other pieces. Um, and I'm not necessarily against this, but. You know, the idea of maybe having fifty-five million dollars down the road sounds pretty tasty towards a sewage treatment plant. That is going to cost the taxpayers increased fees significantly month over month in their utility billing. So again, I'm just all asking you to process um. You know, are we having tunnel vision here? Um, if the only thing that the the freeing up of the five hundred thousand dollars is paying for are maintaining um. Cost of living increases for our um, employees, you know. Where's the five hundred thousand dollars or the million dollars coming from for those two s- two snowplows we heard about? Um, where's all the rest of that money coming from? So as you vote upon this, I would request that. Um, and ultimately it is for the public to decide, but I think if we only present one piece of candy to pick. Then there aren't other options for the public to um, weigh against, well, what if we need this? What if we need that? So that's my um. Greatest piece of input to the rest of council this evening.
Thank you, Council President Rule. Um, I'll just um, just respond before I open it up to council on two things. One. Um, the first thing is the the wastewater plant, um, we've done two rate increases. Um, the vision and the plan was to do three total to support the debt service for the the loans for that plant. So in my mind, the wastewater plant has been addressed by previous administrations. We have one more bump. Next year in those rates to uh, cover that anticipated debt service for that. Um, and then the second point I'd bring up is that um. We do have the discretion to go to the voters to amend this in the future. Um, we could um, sunset it early uh, at the council's discretion. We could sunset it and replace it with an alternative tax. Um, with different projects. So we do have the flexibility if if. If we still have that taxing authority, which we might not in the future, who knows what the legislature does. Um, and no, I I didn't mean to s- suggest that all five hundred thousand goes to cost of living. Um, it just gives us a uh, at least a pathway to address the known um, structural deficits that we're we're facing. As we look into future years, um, some of it could go to the spot bus with that five hundred thousand savings. So it just gives the council um, five hundred thousand dollars of. Uh, new budget authority to put wherever your priorities are in the future.
My comment to that would be that. In the bigger picture, five hundred thousand dollars really isn't that much, and I could see it being absorbed pretty readily by um. The inflationary increases um, uh. Salary raises outside of um, that because of retention here, because. Um, I'm sure housing will continue to rise, and so again, I feel like there's. There's some tunnel vision on your part. We have other infrastructure and other things that eventually. Um, our water plant will also be aging um, twenty-five years from now, so. I'm just, again, to the council, you've got to see the bigger picture. Um, as we promote this, um. You you have to give the public. The larger view. And you can't just say, oh, it's a great idea because this is what we need. And then five or ten years from now, lots of other things are falling apart and we have no option, and you've assured me that this. Will be our only opportunity multiple times. Those are your words because you strongly believe that our um. Taxing is going to go away, so I don't understand how you can amend if that um, is.
It it, you know, you're right.
Going away. So that seems like a little bit of confusing misspeak to me that. You're saying we can change it, but yet you've been a strong advocate. It's it's going away, so I don't believe you can say both things to me. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no need for an apology. Um, uh, any other council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um. Mr. President. So if I'm hearing correctly, is the concern is the short side and is focusing on one thing, right?
Yes.
Um. Which I can respect and understand. I think last meeting we discussed how putting. Focus on many things could. Lower the chances of it passing, and I'm not saying adding one more, like just having two would would be a deal breaker. I think that was the concern last meeting was. Too much information might just be too scary. Um, that's just guessing from our experience. Um, so if I remember correctly, I'm just throwing that out there. Number two, i- it wouldn't just be five hundred thousand dollars one year. That's five hundred thousand dollars. Up until two thousand. Uh, forty-nine, and my calculations are correct, roughly twelve million dollars. So that's not just a five hundred thousand dollars one year. It's. Every year, and tha- that is beneficial. Um, I don't see a net negative in this particular. Um. Um, tax, although we could change it. I don't, and I think to Mr. Mayor's point about. We could always change it if the legislator decides not to. Um, if they decide to extend the population increase for uh. Um. A resort city, then we can, we could in theory change it. I think this is safeguarding for in case we don't get that. But if the legislator decides to. Change that, then we can go back to the drawing board. Am I correct on that, Mr. Mayor?
Um.
Or is?
Yeah.
Is that what you're trying? I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, if they raise the population limits and if it, this taxing authority doesn't disappear, um. We was, as it's written today, the code allows us to sunset this early.
And then we can do a different one.
Uh, it also allows us to propose a new.
A new one, okay. I just want to make sure I understand that correctly, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may respond to you, I, my intention was not to say that we should put. A bunch of different items in this one tax because I do agree on some levels with you there. Um, but I do think that. Maybe not everybody in Sandpoint, because I haven't talked to all almost ten thousand people. Is as concerned about this issue as maybe they are concerned about some other issues, and so. I just want us to look at the broader picture of that, but I was not saying that we should put multiple things. Um, you know, five, six, seven things on here, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Can can that, how would you change it? How, what would your suggestion be? To make it. Repalatable?
Um. What would my suggestion be? Um, I suppose I would have to sit down with the mayor and the departments for much longer discussions to see. What the needs are in the other departments and and where they feel like the city's going to be in five, ten, fifteen and twenty years. And where they feel like the greatest needs of, needs of those funds are because. I'm not behind the scenes working within the city every single day to know what those things are. I mean, I can. Walk through different places and see, you know, different types of crumbling infrastructure, but um. I don't have a a prepared statement to say this is what I would put on the ballot today, so.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Would you think the timing is an issue? Like that long of a?
But that's a complicated question because if it goes away.
Yeah.
Um, then we don't have an opportunity to do much with that, but we still do have. The time from now until the next census to determine. Where all, like to answer your question, going back to where would we put the money or how would we make it more palatable, palatable? Um. We don't have to do it absolute. We don't have to do it absolute at this election cycle. The mayor did say that in presidential election cycles, more people vote. You know, there's all these little pieces and parts, but if it's important enough to the people of Sandpoint, they're going to come out to vote in the next election also. So this just feels like it came at me personally really fast without having a longer time to process the other options and the other pieces of the city and the other needs of the city.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, if I can finish, how, you said we can amend it. Is that an issue amending?
Well, there's, there's things we don't know about the future. We know we have dedicated revenue for the sewer and the water through the utility rates. We know we have park capital improvements and recreation fees through user fees and rental of boat slips. When I think of other infrastructure, the only infrastructure that I hear about every day that we don't have a dedicated funding source or enough is our roads. So can we, what we don't know is we don't know what the legislature is going to do next session. They could very well eliminate the resort city tax altogether this next year. It could be off the table as an option. They could reduce the population to five thousand people. They could expand the population and make this available for towns up to twenty thousand people. We just don't know what they're going to do. And what maybe was misconstrued, what I said is strike while the iron's hot. We know we have this authority right now. And when I say we could amend it, if it were continued by the legislature, we could sunset it, propose a new one. We just don't know whether this is going to be an authority we have next year or the year after.
Okay, I understand that. I guess I don't understand sunsetting and amending and that's.
Oh, so sunsetting would, we would remove the tax, the sales tax.
You can do that once they, the public has voted to to pass this for twenty-five years, you can then go in and say.
The council.
Yeah.
Or amend it, we could remove it and say we're replacing it with a a new proposal. And that new proposal would say removing this tax, replacing it with this tax. So removing the one percent for roads, replacing it for something else. So in general, my opinion is the worst thing that could happen is we'll get some great feedback. The best thing that happens is my intuition that people want our roads fixed is confirmed. And if we get ten percent of the vote in support of this, you're darn right. We'll, we'll do a lot of interviews, surveys and understand what exactly the public didn't like about it.
I have heard a lot of people want the roads. I just wonder about.
Well, and it's roads, it's sidewalks, this whole sidewalk issue about who pays for them in lieu if you're building a house.
Bike, bike paths.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Question, and maybe this is to you, Zach. Can a city have simultaneous lot taxes running? So could we take this one out and then it, again, assuming that we have till twenty thirty, which may be a wrong assumption, could the city go back out and do a second?
It would be another percentage or a half percentage.
Counselor Howard, yes, the code provides that the city can enact one or more local option tax, which from my reading of of that is infinite.
Yes.
But, and then Counselor Duquette, to answer your question, the the amendment can occur, but it does have to go back to the voters. So just so that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Spiro.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is how I see it as fact. We we ultimately don't know what the legislature is going to do. Like they could very well extend it, which is great, or they can end it. At least we have something safeguarded in place, assuming it passes, that does free up X amount of funds per year. Roads, in my opinion, are the lowest hanging fruit. It is, I'm a sample size, there's six of us up here, seven, but in my experience, roads are talked about more than anything. Never I hear about water. I'm just saying from my personal experience. So I'm just going off my personal experience, roads seems like the easiest target for me that can free up, make people happy and free up extra capital. Perfect, Councilman, Council President, probably not. There there's other things that absolutely need help. I think the election year is a great sample size where we can get the the loudest voice for us from our citizens that would give us a good picture of either passing, we're like, great, or it gives us an idea of what we need, if we need to go back to the drawing board. So that's just my two cents on this. Of course, I'd love to see a ballot pass where this can go to parks, X, Y, but I just know from people and taxes and voting, even with myself, it's just the the less is more in this particular case.
Mr. Mayor, Sarah, I have a question for you. So the mayor just spoke to the Dedicated Recreation Fund. And can you reiterate for me, I know we just went through all those numbers. What does, I guess in the general fund, there's, or the capital fund for recreation again, that's three hundred thousand. I know I remember seeing that as one number in our more recent budget. So I guess I'm asking, what is normally allotted? What are the revenues for? I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars for the RV site, and then we have all the the boats.
And that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect us at all?
No, I know it wouldn't affect it. I'm trying to get a perspective on how big that recreation fund is on a yearly basis.
This, this would have nothing to do with the recreation fund?
I know that.
Oh, so the recreation fund gets property taxes, four point five percent of our total levy goes to the recreation fund. That wouldn't change at all with this, and it would still have that. It's about three hundred thousand a year. The, what, the RV is totally different. That's in the park capital fund.
Okay.
Oh, that's a different fund altogether.
And what does the park capital fund end up being on a yearly basis?
So the mortgage comes in there, the RV park goes in there, and it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is dedicated to the ordinance or the ordinance that was passed back in the eighties for park improvements, like capital improvements only. So it cannot be used for maintenance. It can be used for park purchases, park land purchases, whatever that ordinance, and it has been amended a few times, so.
Okay, I was just trying to get a perspective because the mayor was saying he's going to, there's going to be about five hundred thousand dollars freed up to spend in other places. I know people are.
If I can, where that comes in, is that in the general fund right now? We budget, we have been budgeting for the past eight, seven, eight years, five hundred thousand dollars for street improvements. It doesn't always, so it's budgeted and then it gets you project or whatever those projects are slated for the year. We've had several emergency projects come up that might override those projects in that year. One was, an example was a North Boyer that.
Yeah.
That, that one, that was, that was initially was going to be for road, road improvements, and then went for that. But that is what he's talking about. That is the money that instead of being budgeted for that, it would free that up because we didn't have this.
And that could be dispersed throughout different areas of the city, whether that's general fund for salaries or it goes into park maintenance or.
It, it would, it would be general fund. So yes, it would be general fund, but yes, it could be used for any of those purposes within that.
And Councilwoman Rule, just as an example, if the council, there's always been a discussion of how can we help affordable housing? I know that's something you brought up. If the council decided they wanted to help with that, impact fees are one thing that comes up. Can you, can we pay the impact fees for an affordable, qualified affordable housing unit? So the impact fees have to get backfilled because we're promising we're going to do projects with them. So free dollars would allow us to potentially backfill impact fees for affordable housing projects. But at the point I really want to make is absent a, a solution, a new revenue source, our roads will not get any better. In fact, the data shows that they continue to degrade.
Understand the data. I understand that. Okay, no, that was just my question. I'm just trying to get an idea of, and I know we just went through budget, but I don't memorize numbers the way you do apparently.
Well, and and I do want to, like what you're talking about, that the, the cost of living adjustments is always higher than our property tax increases. So that, that does, that five hundred thousand has been five hundred, but we've also been very, very conservative of what we've raised maintenance and operations to be every year for the last several years. And then you also take into consideration revenues. If revenues go down, if there's a market turn, that has always been, that five hundred thousand has always been that cushion that would be probably the first area that we would cut versus people. I mean, it, well, it's up to you guys, but that's what I would, we would suggest.
Okay, I appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Schreiber, thank you.
Got a lot of comments here. I'll try to be somewhat brief because it's starting to get late. So I I put a lot of thought into what Council President Rule said after the last meeting. And I think something that hasn't necessarily been touched on yet is the danger of overspending. And that is that if this fund is solely dedicated to streets and we have this new funding source for streets and we go out and build a bunch of streets, well, the, the useful lifespan of a street is about twenty-five years. And so what happens when this fund sunsets in twenty-five years? And now everything that we've built over the last twenty-five years needs to be rebuilt, and we don't have any funds for that. So while I do so, still support this initiative, I think it's really important that we spend this money wisely and and don't just go and build every street in town with the expectation that that's going to last forever because it won't. And in twenty-five years, we very well might be in this exact same situation.
Yeah, I, I, let me just respond to that quickly. So as you remember, many of our streets don't have base rock and haven't been built properly. So this would be a funding source to, you know, once they're built properly, the re, the maintenance is a far lower number per section of street. So if we could get them to those national standards, rebuild them appropriately, then we can do our chip seals and our overlays and you have, they're not sinking into the ground effectively. But based on Holly's projection and our street pavement assessment, this is what, what was presented as a ballpark number of what we need to bring them up to our national standards.
Sure, and I understand all of that, yeah. I just wanted to give a little bit of caution that we don't think, oh, great, now we can build, you know, I have boulevards with medians down the middle on every street. And it's like, no, we, we need to be careful with this money and only do what's absolutely necessary. As far as actual actionable changes that I would like to see to this ordinance, or is it an ordinance? Council President Rule made a good point. We did hear that we need new snowplowers coming up, and those are going to be pretty expensive things. As well as we just passed a contract for seventy-four thousand dollars for plowing. So I don't see street maintenance on here. We have sidewalk maintenance and alley maintenance, but not street maintenance. So I think it would be wise to put street maintenance as well so that something like a snowplow or plowing could be included without having to amend this ordinance. And that could potentially put us past that five hundred thousand. The other thing, comment that I had on this, we hadn't really talked about alleyways, and I don't think it's wise to put that in there. That's just my opinion. I've, you know, I've, I've heard the same thing that a lot of us have heard, and that is that people really do support rebuilding our streets, but I think alleyways might be a more controversial topic.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Schreiber, would you say Xing out C and just adding on A and street maintenance, something like that?
Yep, exactly.
I do believe you mentioned maintenance when you talk about it. I think that just, but put it in there for sure.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
You have to maintain what you build.
Mr. Mayor, did you have any specific reason for putting alleyways or just?
Yeah, you, you know, it's, this isn't a science, it's an art. I've heard throughout the last almost two decades, many alley, abutting alley property owners who say, gosh, will the city do something about our alley? So, you know, it's written in a way, obviously, streets would be the priority, but if somebody needed gravel. Again, this isn't plowing, this isn't, you know, paving alleys, this is, in my mind, a grader or some gravel. And I just thought there's enough alley property owners who are frustrated with the condition of their alleys that they'd like a solution. It might get a few more votes.
I would maybe suggest that you don't put improvements as much as you put maintenance and make the assumption that we just haven't maintained and we're going to maintain in the sense of grading. But maintaining could also lead people to believe they're going to get plowed. So I think you need to some specific language there. And then I would like to specify, as I asked for earlier, that the pathways include the pathways in our parks in addition to just the pathways that are integrated with streets because we seem to be taking subpar care of those, and they are well-used and very important to the public. And if we're going to do pathways, let's make sure that includes all pathways, including in parks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule. I think on the alleys, maybe gravel and grading. Alleyway gravel and grading would be a better, it takes out the potential belief that we're going to improve them any other way. And then on the pathways, that was specifically written broadly, so it didn't exclude pathways in parks. It says sidewalks and pathway improvements. So in my reading of this, that would make pathways in the city, all pathways eligible.
I'd like to see it specify inclusive to the parks.
Mr. Mayor, Council President, what makes you think that our sidewalks or pathways would be excluded from this?
Because they are not cared for by streets. Streets doesn't really care for the, the pathway parks. The, the rec department cares for the, the pathways in the parks, and it's always been a part of that budget. And so I could see how we aren't going to be sitting up here, nor is the mayor years down the road. So I'd like specific direction as opposed to vague language, and I don't think it hurts anything.
So a sidewalk going down to Traverse Park to a pathway.
No, I'm talking about pathways within the parks, like in Lakeview Park and Traverse Park.
Yeah, so maybe legal is, do we have an issue here?
I would say it's up to the interpretation of the current government that's, that's working this at the time. I certainly see, this is a policy question. I think legally, the fact that pathways included probably allows, would allow for the interpretation that, that the park pathways would be included in this as well. But I certainly understand Council.
And I'm trying to steer away, I, I, not my belief, but I sense that there's a, some segment of our, our constituents that doesn't want money going into parks, I'll just say it. You know, you know, parks or we're spending our money appropriately in parks, I've heard that a lot. So I, I was trying to exclude the word parks from this language, specifically not to raise red flags of someone considering this.
So I would probably be okay with that in the ballot language, but will there be documentation outside of that that would specify it more specific administratively? So that when this current council and the mayor no longer sits upon here, the intention is known and not lost.
I, I, I guess we could say any pathway improvements, any, how about any sidewalk or pathway improvements?
I would be okay with all pathways, sidewalk and all pathways.
Fine with me, Councilwoman. Great.
So all sidewalks too, because somebody might say which sidewalks?
Yeah, I, I don't want to say all sidewalks because if this is to pass, we then need to tweak code to exclude new subdivisions from us paying for those and things like that. So I'd like to leave it to some degree to our discretion to allow us to change code.
What if the subdivision has a pathway? Okay, cool.
Not on city-owned property, good point.
She's sharp. Mr. Mayor, just pointing a clarification. So the, these revenues that would be generated, assuming that this got passed, do those revenues come in front of the council to be decided how they're used?
At our annual appropriation.
Okay, so Council President Rule, that, that may be a solution regardless of what we put in terms of wording, that each year we get to go dedicate how those are used in accordance with this? Is that a fair interpretation?
Mr. Mayor, not to put words in your mouth, Council President, I think her concern is in the future, when we're not here making that decision at the end of the year, it's.
Twenty-five years from now, you know, I don't know where I'm going to be.
I don't love the all pathways. I think it could be interpreted maybe by someone who's, what are they talking about? I think sidewalks and pathway. I think sidewalks and pathways is appropriate, but I obviously need your support to move this forward. So whatever it takes.
I'm, I'm fine either way, but I prefer not the all myself as well, but I'm not going to die on that hill.
I also prefer, prefer without the word all.
Yeah, I do as well. And can I, the alleyway gravel and grading, I just, I don't want people to expect that all of a sudden they're going to get gravel and grading in their alleys.
No, this is just what the dollars can be expended on. So every year we would come up with a a budget that had so much for roads and streets and pathways and alleyway gravel and grading.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I also would just reiterate that I don't think alleys should be on there. I think some people are going to not want to vote for this if they see alleys on there. If we're trying to brainstorm other ways that we could spend this money that I think would be palatable to the voters, what about building maintenance?
I feel like we're in pretty good shape on building maintenance. Not ideal, but I mean, it's not like the road situation where we, we don't have a solution.
Right, but any dollar that we spend out of this fund is a dollar that stays in our general fund. And so voters might appreciate that we're maintaining what we have. And so that might be more palatable if, if we're talking about maintaining the buildings that we have with this money rather than adding an additional service that the city is going to gravel and grade alleyways with this money.
The majority of residents, the majority live on alleyways.
Right, but it's a, it's a service that we don't currently provide.
And I mean, I, again, go back to simpler is better. I'd prefer not to add buildings that I feel like, you know, I, I, I don't look out and see a catastrophic, you know, funding gap for our, our building maintenance. We, we are able to maintain our buildings generally well, but so I'd like to keep it just to roads and alleys and pathways. The alley, I, again, I threw that in there because the majority of our residents live on alleys and I hear frequently, can't you do something about our alleys? So again, we could, you know, to some degree, it's a test of the voter sentiment and opinion. I don't think we can go wrong one way or the other. Gravel's pretty cheap, so maybe we can grade and gravel it if that's taken out with our savings or reallocation of the general fund dollars.
If the general council is opposed to the all, I'm, I'll move on from that if they prefer pathway.
Is there consensus to remove all? And let's go to C, alleyway gravel and grading. Is there consensus to strike that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask real quick, Councilman Schreiber, is your concern that we don't need that in there or that it's going to hurt the vote?
Yes, my concern is it's going to hurt the vote.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, you believe it's going to improve the vote?
Yeah.
I believe it would improve as well.
I do too.
Is there a way we can word it? I don't, I just don't want people to expect that now they're going to get their alleys.
Well, I'd be the same concern with seeing everybody thinking that all the streets are going to be fixed in one, one shot, right?
Well, there's no all in there anymore.
Yeah, all is gone.
Yeah, I'm in favor of leaving it.
Okay, with that, any further discussion?
I don't know if this would make a difference, but maybe it would tone it down is to just change the, the order of the sentence and just have gravel and grading of alleyways that might kind of tame it down a little bit and reach a middle ground. I mean, I don't know if anybody's, but I mean, well, sometimes the order of the wording, like you're pointing out that we're just doing gravel and some grading and oh yeah, it is in the alleyways. So that might be more palatable, palatable way to.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And so then if somebody wanted their alleyway gravelled and graded, would we?
Call up their local representative and they'd say in the budget this year. Let's get some.
Beginning of the meeting and say, hey, fix my. And now we say we got the money, we can.
Yeah, I think depending on the, the council's action on this, the next steps are obviously for me to, we, we can't say vote yes. We can educate the voters. We can, I would imagine we'd do a informational flyer that asked legal questions about, you know, what's the backlog? Is there available revenue to take care of our backlog? So we can ask questions in a, in a flyer, an educational factual questions. And then I imagine there'd be probably some private sector entities and groups like Memorial Field who might get together and, and actually have a a pro vote campaign. And I think the big thing for me is hitting the radio. A couple of radio shows, Blue Sky, K R F Y Rotary, interviews with the paper. And just get the word out there, speak to people. I'll, I'll stand out there next to a pothole and say no money to, to fill this. But it'll take a, a lot of education and work and hopefully we get some feedback. Hopefully it passes. And if not, we'll learn and keep going. With that, I would entertain a motion to pass the language as presented in this resolution.
移到
Second.
Moved by Dick, second by Howard. This will be a roll call vote.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Duquette?
Yes, let the voters choose.
Council Schreiber?
Yes.
Council Rule?
I'm just going to make a statement that I think the sidewalk and pathways are super important to this town as we promote ourselves as a walking town and based upon that piece, I'm going to vote yes.
Council Sprow?
Yes.
Council Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you so much, council members. I am excited to see what our constituents have to say about this. Finally, those not participating in the executive session will now need to exit the room.
Mr. Mayor.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we should state the reason for the executive session.
On my, it's not, oh, yes, yes. Thank you. We have no new business tonight and the final item on the agenda is an executive session. I will now entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to under code 742061F to communicate with the council and public agency to discuss legal ramifications of the legal opinions for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Sprow?
Yes.
Council Howard?
Yes.
Council Schreiber?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Duquette?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Those not participating in the executive session will now need to exit the room. Thank you everyone for attending this evening.